Legal for Chanel Student Related Matters, H I B Reports, Negotiations and Other Confidential Matters. And being further resolved that these matters will remain public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I have a motion?
Mr. Ochs.
I'll second. I was thinking first. Thank you. All right, all in favor?
All right.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Can I have everyone's attention, please? Good evening. Welcome. We are thankful that everyone is here. It's a nice crowd of folks. We're gonna start, we did this earlier, but now that everyone is here, we want to say the pledge again and have a moment of silence. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands unafraid, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all. I'll take a place to stand for a moment of silence as we remember Nicole Powell and other folks in our community that have been affected in many different ways. You've seen it, thank you. All right, Xeno, will you do a roll call for us?
Mr. Coleman?
Here.
Mr. Mullis?
Here.
Mr. Goodman?
Here.
Mr. Sanchez? Mr. Ochs?
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Here.
Mr. Velez? Mr. James Vickery?
Here.
Mr. Powell is unable to be here this evening. A former is present. And can we just announce that the copies of the personnel section of the agenda? More copies will be printed with the correct number of pages.
So, we're working that out. Give us just a few minutes and they'll start circulating. And then, okay. So, Mr. Sanchez, I'll turn it over to you to do some introductions and welcomes.
That's great. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our annual joint board meeting. Tonight, we get together with our neighbors from our sending districts to highlight some of the special programs and offerings at Hackensack High School. Before I introduce Principal Montesano and his administrative team to you, please join me in welcoming our guests from our sending districts. Please welcome Superintendent of Schools from Rochelle Park, Dr. Sudam Noble, and Board members Teresa Cavallo and Christina Holtz. The Superintendent of South Hackensack, Mr. Jason Chicarella, Chicarcella, I can't say him, so I apologize, sends his regrets. And finally, the Superintendent of Maywood, Mike Jordan, and also for Maywood Board President Kevin Taylor. We thank them for taking time from their busy schedules to join us tonight. Please give them all a round of applause, thank you. And please join me in welcoming Principal Montesano and his amazing team. Take it away, it's good.
There are more seats, four seats available if you have any of those who would like them.
Good evening. My name is Jim Montesano, I'm the principal of Hackensack High School. I'd just like to thank our own Board of Education and our administrators for having us tonight, so thank you. I'd also like to welcome the members of the Rochelle Park, Maywood, and South Hackensack Administration and Board of Education. This really is always one of my favorite nights. It's an opportunity for us to highlight all the wonderful things that happened at Hackensack High School. Sometimes it's very difficult to choose a particular area, but this year, one kind of popped into my head. Sometimes we kind of rack our brains to feel what we can do and what we can highlight something different. This one, to be honest with you, was very, very easy. Tonight, we're gonna highlight our World Language Department. And I think after you see our students present tonight and all of our wonderful teachers that are here, it's really a no-brainer. They do a wonderful job. They bring a tremendous amount of culture, climate, and spirit into our building, and also outside of our building, too. They represent us so well every single day, and I think it's gonna be pretty clear as to why they were chosen tonight. Thank you. Just some formal introductions. I'd like to introduce Ms. Patty Lozano, our Grade 12 Assistant Principal. Nicole Adams, Grade 11. Bob Greenwood, Grade 10. He has some ECDC fans, it's impressive, so yeah. Mr. Selsel King, Grade 9. And our interim Athletic Director, Mr. Gordon White. Additionally, we're very fortunate to have some wonderful supervisors that help us kind of really make the wheels go, so to speak. Roseanne Cavallo, English. Rich Delvecchio, Science and Industrial Arts. Talino Sepian Guidance. Joanne Winter, Special Services. And the Brain Trust of our World Language Department, Ms. Marielle Messina. So tonight, what we would like to do, we have three offerings of world languages at the high school. We have Spanish, French, and Italian. They each offer so much for our students, there are different pathways that our students can take, and it really is a wonderful opportunity. Additionally, I'd like to share some of the world language data, AP data, excuse me, that they have this year, and I think it really does, it is gonna speak for itself. Probably the most impressive thing to me is I asked the World Language Department, I said, can I meet you guys one day after school? We could talk about possibly highlighting some of your different initiatives and activities. Every single one of them said yes. Every single one of them met me after school for as long as it took to kind of get things done. And not only that, they met me here tonight at 6 o'clock with 65 of their closest friends' students. And they rehearsed, they went over things, they really are a wonderful group. So I'd like to just put a face or a name to the face, so to speak, for some of our different teachers who are here tonight. Some of our Spanish teachers, Giovanni Colosso. Soraya Gonzalez. Joahannie Gruyon. Mercedes Hernandez. Luisa Manzor. Elsa Marquez Apote. Stephanie Moreno. And Giovanni Soto. Additionally, we have two Italian teachers at the high school, Ms. Mary Ann Russo. And Ms. Carriola Tahara. And we have a French teacher who has brought so much life into that department, in particular Claudia Gettis. So, one of the things that happened, I guess, due to the pandemic, but across the entire country, AP data plummeted. And if you think about it, due to the pandemic, due to the virtual learning, it went tremendously down. The only place it didn't go down was in the World Language Department, which kind of jumped out to me, said, we need to recognize this group of teachers, we need to highlight some of the different work that they do. But if you look at historical data over the past couple of years, if you think about New Jersey's educational system, it is very high compared to the rest of the country. Not only do our AP teachers exceed United States benchmarks, they also exceed New Jersey averages as well, which to me is a tremendous, tremendous testament to the people who are sitting before you tonight. Spanish language and culture is always tremendously high, but a good benchmark for college readiness is having a hundred, getting a three on your AP exam. 100% of those students got a three or better in world language, which, I mean, in Spanish language, is tremendous. Our French language and culture, which is new to us, but we really are building a true program. The course average was three, but every single student got a three or higher, so 100% of those students as well. And Italian language and culture, which, again, the sky is the limit, they're doing a wonderful job there now that we have additional offerings in the middle school, but 100% of their students got a three or higher as well. So we really are so proud of their work. So tonight, no one wants to hear me talk anyway. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna turn it over to the best commodity and the best asset that Hackensack High School has to offer, and that's our students. So without further ado, I'm gonna turn it over to our students who are gonna speak about our Spanish program.
Buenos noches y bienvenidos a todos. My name is Nala James, I'm one of the many students at Hackensack High School taking a Spanish course. I'm currently enrolled in Spanish III. And throughout my Spanish studies, I have loved learning the diversity of Spanish language and culture. I especially enjoyed the interactive activities that teachers have used and allowed me to have a great experience. There's something beautiful about learning someone else's culture, and I'm so grateful for the opportunity that I have with my teachers every day.
Hi, my name is Teacher Andrews, and I'm currently enrolled in the Honor of Spanish course here at Hackensack High School. I'm very excited about the challenge that this course brings and the prospect of broadening my language spectrum. It exposes me to a lot of culture, reading, spelling, writing, and grammar. And I'm excited to continue learning more about the language and Spanish studies overall. Most importantly, though, I'm enjoying the class. Ms. Colosso, she's a great, she's a great teacher, and the attitude she comes into school with every day pushes me to wanna learn more about the Spanish language. I understand the importance of learning Spanish, especially in today's climate. And the Honor of Spanish III class I'm taking pushes me to find full comprehension and all, and I'm really happy to be one of her students. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Brandon Serango, and I'm here to talk about the AP Spanish course here in Hackensack High School. I come from a Spanish household, and obviously, my first language was indeed Spanish. And I've been taking Spanish class since the fifth grade back in South Hackensack Elementary School. So when I first came here to Hackensack as a freshman, I took Native 1. As a sophomore, I took Native 2. And as a junior, Native 3. And as of now, I am currently taking AP Spanish. And my goal for this class and what it has to offer is the bilingual seal at the end of the year that we receive once you pass the AP exam. And also, it helps you with your Spanish literacy and helps you improve to be able to speak Spanish fluently. Also, the bilingual seal I would like to talk about, it helps you get ready for college and for job applications when the time comes. I strongly believe that it is important to be bilingual and be able to speak two different languages here in the United States. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Kimberly Gomez, and I am one of the students that are a period four AP Spanish. I came from Maywood Middle School, where the majority of my Spanish years kind of revolved around worksheets and packets. Talking about Latin America and Hispanic culture in English text, paired with also like grammatical lessons, which didn't really challenge me as a Spanish-speaking person. In eighth grade, before I graduated, they allowed us to take a placement test, which would help us on our upcoming freshman year of high school. And that one allowed me to begin my freshman year in Native Spanish 2. And from that point on, I am a junior now, having, taking AP Spanish at the moment. And to be completely honest, when I started, I didn't have like a lot of high expectations, as I didn't know what the course might bring. But to my surprise, the course was actually like, it's really interesting and thoroughly informative, but it also worked on many things that I need to fix in my writing as an American. And so far, this class has allowed me to be able to work on my Spanish writing skills and reading comprehension, in addition of learning, being able, of learning and being able to finally implement more concise and complex words into my writing. I finally feel like I'm improving during justice to my language. And including what my peers said, these also help us kind of obtain university credits after we graduate. And also with the bilingual diploma, we kind of have more of an open path and opportunities when we decide what to do with our future. Thank you.
Hello, everybody, my name is Janina Warkila. Growing up, I lived in a Spanish-speaking household. All my life, I've been a translator for my parents who used to struggle with understanding English. At the age of 35, my dad wanted to learn proper English to communicate better with people and his own kids. We lived in a country where the English language is a necessity, but for a person with a little education background, this language barrier makes life rockier. There are things in the English language that my dad could still not read or understand properly, and of course, neither did the six-year-old daughter. But I was in a school that was taught in English, so I had to know every word in the dictionary and translate it to Spanish according to my dad. Every time my dad spoke in Spanish, I would respond in Spanish. But as I grew older, I was surrounded by the English language and only responded in English. As I kept getting accustomed to speaking English, I started to lose my ability to speak Spanish. Becoming embarrassed to speak Spanish, I enrolled in a class that was taught and spoken in Spanish only. I entered Miss Genesis's class my sophomore year for the first time, pre-AP Native Spanish 1, sorry, 2. Little did I know the journey that was ahead of me. This class has challenged me in the best way possible. This AP Spanish class has taught me about values and halls many people do not recognize nowadays, while also teaching me about the correct usage of grammar and spelling. An assignment in this class is to create a research paper. It would be about things such as social media, the usage of iPhones, or even plastic surgery. These papers would be opinion-based and always filled my brain with excitement. Some of my best research papers were written in this Spanish class because of the preparation and guidance the students and I had. We were taught how to properly observe and analyze the resources we had in front of us to make a beautiful paper that exercised our mind to think deeper than the surface level, while also learning a valuable lesson. These engaging lessons prepared us for real-life experiences, and it also prepared us for the upcoming AP test. The language teachers have given me and all their students the opportunity to become successful Spanish-speaking students and the best chance out of five on the AP test. This Spanish AP class has had a positive and powerful impact on the students and I. We were challenged, motivated, and disciplined. Thank you so much.
Thank you all. I'd now like to call up our French students to speak about the French program.
Merci.
Now, for those of you who are understanding, you should take French. I'm just kidding. All I said, all I said, all I said was, good evening and welcome to everyone. My name is Billy Fosbough, and I'm AP French student. And as well as I'm current president of French Honor Society at my high school. Tonight, me and my classmate will be presenting you about the courses that are offered at our Hackensack High School. So here we have French Level 1, and we have French Level 2, French 2 Honors, French 3, French 3 Honors, and AP French Language and Culture. So, me, together, we have here some students from different levels of French classes that are going to share about their experiences in the French class. So we have French Level 1.
Salut. Bonsoir. Hello, I'm Christina.
And I'm Victoria.
And we are French 1 students. We just, we just started exploring this beautiful language and so far, so good. We are loving our class and the diversity of our culture.
Did you know that French is an official language in 29 countries? Yep, we recently learned that in class.
We are looking forward to learning more throughout the year and moving on to next level. Merci.
Merci, mes amis. And we have French Level 2, William.
Hello. Hello, my name is William, and I'm in French 2. We, I love of learning about and hearing the French language and learning the culture from all the assignments we do.
Merci beaucoup. And we have French Honors 2.
Bonjour, I'm Michelle.
And I'm Erica. And we're taking French 2 Honors, and we are very excited about this class and the challenges it presents.
Although French, the French language, language is not as easy as it sounds, it's still very beautiful. In French Honors 2, we are learning more about the culture and more how to communicate in French.
We are looking forward to learning more and advancing onto different types of skills.
Merci.
Merci beaucoup, mes amis. And we have French Level 3.
Salut, my name is Rokia.
My name is Edward.
And we are currently French 3 Honors students. As you advance in the level of French, the classes can become more challenging, but it's always as fun as being in Level 1.
In all French classes, we learn about the diversity of French-speaking countries and their unique cultures.
My classmates and I are excited to learn more about the French language.
I am planning on taking French all four years of my high school career.
Merci.
And then now we have AP French students.
Salut tout le monde. Je m'appelle Genesis, and I am a current AP French student. In our class, we communicate mainly in French and continue exploring the French language and culture through the analysis of current events and reading of authentic materials, journals, and music to help us prepare for the AP exam that will take place in May.
We hope this helps you to, it will help you to give you a general idea of French courses that are offered at our high school on our daily basis.
In addition to the French courses, many of us also participate in the French Club and attend French Honor Society meetings, and we have a lot of exciting ideas and events prepared for the near future. So what is the goal of the French Club? So the French Club mission is we continuously look into extracurricular activities that allow for awareness of French language and Francophone culture into the school community. Of course, we encourage everyone to join the club, even if you do not take French.
Thank you. So, the mission, the goal of the French Honor Society at Hackensack High School is recognize students who have achieved excellence in the study of the French and promote a greater understanding and appreciation of the Francophone culture and civilization. We are looking for, also, we are looking forward to wear, to wear our sashes in our graduation ceremony and our course proudly. Also, during our French Club and French Honor Society meetings, we do school activities. In this picture, we have French cooking class. And the next slide, we have eighth grade orientation. And also, in our every meetings, in our every French Club and French Society meetings, we keep exploring about the culture of the French and Francophone of the culture. And also, we have in this slide, holiday gift exchange. And this was a recent picture took over the group. This was our first official meeting, first official meeting of French Club and French Honor Society, which we named Back to School Mid and Grade.
Some student opportunities that we've had in the past was the French trip to Madeleine's Petit Paris, where students got to enjoy a delicious typical French meal. We've also, we also hosted a community service, which there was a food drive to the Hackensack Community Center. And we also had the slam dunk, the junk cleaning the parks of our community, which we will also have October 30th, this October 30th. And that was it, thank you.
And, and for that month, and finally, we would like to thank you all for your time today and for your continued support. If you would like to know more about our French Club, please support and follow on our Instagram, hhs.french. Merci beaucoup, buh-bye.
I'd now like to welcome our Italian students to call up, to discuss our Italian classes.
Buonasera, mi chiamo Derek Fusco. Io sono nella classe Italia, in la classe avanzata di italiano. So to start things off, I want to discuss about the Italian courses that we offer here in Hackensack. So something amazing that I find is that Italian is now being offered in seventh grade compared to it only being offered during eighth grade during my middle school days. The reason why I find that amazing is because students who choose to take Italian from seventh grade to, from seventh grade to eighth grade will have two years of experience if they choose to tackle on Italian during their high school years. Okay, so to start off with our Italian courses, students, all our, all our Italian courses offer five credits. So students who choose to take Italian in the high school will start off with Italian 1. Upon the completion of that class, students will take Italian 2 or Honors Italian 2 with a teacher's recommendation. Upon the completion of that class, students will take Italian 3 or Honors Italian 3 with a teacher's recommendation. Last but not least, the class that I'm currently enrolled in, AP Italian Language and Culture, students will take that as their final year, junior year, or senior year. So something amazing about this class is that if you choose to take the AP exam and of course, pass it, you will receive college credits. And something that I took note of is that last year's AP Italian class, all the students passed their AP exam. So my class is now currently looking to replicate those scores. Thank you, and I will now present my friend Angelo.
Buongiorno a tutti. Mi chiamo Angelo Valencia. E' italiano. Sto prendendo le classi dell'italiano AP. The Italian course and curriculum can, is really no different from other curriculum classes offered by Hackensack High School, whether it be from Spanish or French. The Italian course and curriculum is divided into two core values. The first one, I would like to reckon, believe, is the Italian language itself. You will be learning as a student, whether you be from Italian 1 to AP Italian, everything about syntax, diction, and of course, everything grammatical regarding Italian. However, though, as importantly, the second core value of every Italian, Italian learner is itself the Italian culture. When it comes to the Italian Honor Society, it is the most highest regard, is the highlight of every Italian student who is attending Hackensack High School. When it comes to the Italian Honor Society, I would reckon that it's gonna be divided into three core parts. The first core part is of course, the Italian language. The second core part is the Italian culture. And finally, arguably the most important in Hackensack is the community service. As you are a junior, typically in your junior year, most likely during your spring, that is when the Italian Honor Society induction begins. Now, of course, there will always be some sort of prerequisites, namely, there are three of them. As per state, as per state over there, the first prerequisite is taking three full classes of Italian. The second course, oh, excuse me, the second prerequisite is those three Italian courses, you must have a passing grade, namely, an A. And finally, the last prerequisite is completing 15 hours of community service in, in Hackensack High School, in school service. And now, excuse me for a little bit, I'm gonna read out the mission goal statement per verbatim. The Italian Honor Society's goal is to recognize students who have achieved excellence in the study of Italian, as well as to promote a greater understanding and appreciation of the Italian culture and civilization, which might sound pretty interesting, no? Now, of course, there is a video that we're gonna be playing to you all, which is about the Italian Honor Society induction. And now this happened, of course, for like, you know, all of the cases that happened in like two years. And of course, this video is about our oath. Now please, go ahead. Now, in terms of the Italian Honor Society, we already know that it cultivates new li- uh new knowledge of Italian culture of it all. And so, I, with the Italian tal- uh with the Italian Honor Society in mind, that's what I, I believe, this Honor Society truly makes Italian culture molte bellissimo. Now, I'm gonna present David, who will talk about the Italian club.
Grazie Angelo. Buonasera, mi chiamo Davide Balarezzo e io sto prendendo italiano nel Hackensack High School. For those of you who do not speak Italian, good evening, my name is David Balarezzo and I'm currently taking AP Italian at the Hackensack High School. I'd like to take the time tonight to introduce you all to Circolo Italiano, our high school's very own Italian club. Circolo Italiano is involved in many activities throughout the year, one of which is high school orientation, where we give a school tour to the incoming freshmen. We also participate in Slam Dunk, Slam Dunk the Junk every year, an event where we dedicate a day to cleaning up our community. In addition, we also devote a fundraiser to an important cause every year. This year, that exact cause is Purse's For a Purpose, where we will be donating essentials to victims of domestic abuse. Overall, Circolo Italiano's main agenda is to promote the Italian heritage by serving our community. And most importantly, anyone can join regardless of whether they've taken the Italian course or not. Grazie, thank you for your time.
Finally, we have two student organizations that really, again, when you talk about community service, they go well above and beyond and they really do align to the vision and vision of Hackensack High School. So first, I'd like to call up our Latin American Student Association.
Um good eve- good evening, everyone, my name is Cameron Nussel, a member of LASA, Stanford Latin America Student Association. Um LASA is an organization open to all the students at the high school that will expose them to the cultural traditions of Latin America. It was founded in September of two thousand thirteen with a, with a membership of over forty students that has organized a number of activities. Some of those are ESL student tutoring, slam dunk, a, a alumni presentation, carnival dance, bake sales and holiday gift exchange.
Buonasche con todos, me chiamo Ivana Gurumendi y también soy miembro del Club de LASA. Uh some community activities that we do. Okay, some school activities. We have the Hispanic Heritage Month celebration, where some students and club members participate dancing, singing and presenting poems. We are part of the incoming eighth grade orientation where we talk to the incoming students. That's not the one. Not that one. Yep, that one. To the incoming students and let them know what we do here at the high school. Uh we also do the flower grams um to recollect money for our association. We also do the back to school non bilingual guides, where we talk to the um parents that don't speak English.
Um some student opportunities that lots of members get is go uh like on trips to Round Paul College. We get to tour the college and to see how, how it is pretty much to feel at col- uh at a college. Then we also get to see, like, let us know how the paperwork is pretty much. And also, we also go, get to go to on a trip to Montecle State and we here at the Hackensack High School, we get to see the alumni presentation where former students here come in, pretty much get, get of their, their experience here at the Hackensack High School with um pretty much with advice and pretty much to take any opportunity we can get here to succeed here at Hackensack High School.
Uh some community activities that we do, uh we do collaboration with Parents Outreach Program. We also do readings to children or parents in the ESL evening classes and LASA also gives scholarships to seniors.
And last but certainly not least is our Spanish Honor Society, all fifty-six of them. I'm not gonna do this, because you guys did this much better than me, so I'll just stand back.
Buenas noches a todos, my name is Kresha Gandhi and I'm a senior here at Hackensack High School and I'm the president of the Spanish National Honor Society. I am here today along with the other Spanish National Honor Society's officers, as well as our advisor, Senora Colosino over there. Um so our mission as the Spanish National Honor Society is to promote academic excellence and the interest of the Spanish language and to feed the need for education, to strive to make a difference, to express the importance of getting involved and to benefit domestic and international communities through a variety of service opportunities. At Hackensack High School, we accomplish this mission through a variety of activities and events. In this presentation, we are going to show you what we've done. Throughout the years, we've done so many projects that benefited Hackensack High School students, Hackensack's community, the state and international communities. So in this next few slides, we're going to discuss um local uh things that we've done and community service. So here in the city of Hackensack, we have something called the Slam Dunk the Junk, which throughout the city of Hackensack, we uh help clean up the city and we normally do this in the fall and in the spring. Another thing that we do is the Prospect, um Prospect Heights Care Center and help out um the senior citizens during the holidays and in the spring. Typically, we do things like play games, plant the yard, sing Christmas carols, give gifts and spread holiday cheer. Another thing that we do is the uh Greater Bergen Community, which we donate gifts to children in need.
Hola, soy Ashley Zhang and I'm one of the vice presidents of the Spanish National Honor Society. Uh while we are serving our local community, we're also helping international communities around the world. We have worked with many countries such as Puerto Rico, Colombia, Mexico and Dominican Republic. Currently, we're focusing on working with the village of Peru. Last year as a group, we were able to donate one thousand dollars as Kresha won second place in the Team Essay Contest. And Team donated five hundred dollars to help Peru in our schools we have. In total, we're able to donate one thousand five hundred dollars to help a small village in Peru to grow quinoa crops. Team is the Empatic Entrepreneurial Quality Mission, a nonprofit organization designed to promote empathy, equality, entrepreneurism and diversity. We empower youth developments through education and food programs. Support women entrepreneurs who want to help their community and help help poor communities. In two thousand eighteen, we have attended many workshops through Team where we met many high school students and leaders around the world to learn about different ways to help underprivileged communities. Serving our local and international community has brought our team together immensely as we work together to accomplish a common goal. Muchas gracias.
Hola, mi hermosa Trisha Gandhi and I'm one of the vice presidents of the Spanish National Honor Society. Through a variety of fundraisers, we collect money for Senior Scholarship Night and other Spanish National Honor Society's activities. During the pandemic, we had a poster contest to lift the spirits and stay positive. One of our Hackensack High School student, Alina Moya, was the winner of the contest. During the eighth grade orientation, we like to showcase what the Spanish Honor Society is all about to recruit new members for following years and keep this club going strong. We also do a lot of student activities. Every year, we celebrate the Hispanic Heritage Month with performances, but this year, we did a door decoration competition. We always participate with perf- perso- performances for the Black History Month, where we bring African Hispanic culture live to the Hackensack High School stage. Our annual footsall tournament is an indoor soccer competition where students and teachers create their teams to compete in the main gym. We have gold, silver and bronze medals for the winning teams. The whole school gets involved and celebrates the society. Gracias.
We have a volunteer fundraisers to support our endeavors, to name a few, a car wash. In November, we'll host our annual footsall tournament. The plans are participations in the five K fourteen against the Bergen County Schools to see who gets the most participants. The induction for incoming members will take place in April. There will also be a teacher talent show in May and we hope you consider attending this event to see many of our teachers showcase their talents. Muchas gracias, we thank you for your continued support.
Well, that concludes our program. I think, as you could see, it really was a no brainer, kind of s- uh you know, selecting our world language department. To our staff, our teachers, thank you, you guys really are wonderful. And an even bigger round of applause to our best asset, and that's our students, so thank you guys very much for presenting tonight. Mr. Sanchez, thank you. Thank you, Principal Montesano, and then all of our wonderful students and staff for bringing thi- this, bringing this program to us and this excellent presentation. Um I would be remiss if I did not mention that a vice president of South Hacken- Hackensack is here of Annika Davis. I apologize, I did not realize you were here. Um South Hackensack is actually having their board meeting tonight, so thank you, Annika Davis, for joining us tonight. Okay, next up, um we're pleased to announce that all of our Hackensack public schools have achieved Sustainable Jerseys for Schools Bronze Level Certification. Um with four schools also submitting for and earning Digital Schools Stars Recognition. It should be known that our four, excuse me, that our four Digital Schools Star recipients are among only thirty-seven schools in the entire state to receive this distinction. With well over two thousand students in the schools in the state, this is quite an accomplishment and they have a lot to be proud of. Um please observe this uh one minute video.
Hello, I'm Robert Sanchez, president of Hackensack Public Schools. Today, I'm proud to announce that all of our schools have been awarded the Bronze Level Status with Sustainable Jerseys in Schools Program. Here is our electric be machine that's helping us towards our efforts towards sustainability.
We are honored to accept the Bronze Certification for Sustainable Schools. Our students are so excited to continue to accomplish this goal and to fertilize the soil around our middle school campus.
On behalf of Nelly Q Partners School, we are extremely honored to accept this. We know that sustainability is something that is ongoing and we are continuing to make sure that that happens. We're already putting in an effort this year for everything from environmental justice to equity. Thanks to our staff.
Hi everyone, I'm Christopher Brandon, proud principal of Jackson Avenue Schools. We are excited to receive the Jersey Schools for Sustainability and Digital Star Awards. Go Jackson!
Thank you. We are proud of each school's commitment to sustainability and digital learning and we thank each of the schools for their respect and their respective green teams for their leadership in achieving this distinguished honor. I would also be remiss if I did not acknowledge Adrian Saperro, District Technology Coordinator, for his leadership in with this initiative, as we would not have been successful without him, so thank you, Adrian. Um quick public service announcement, if you own a Jeep, license plate number X three seven LPV, you left your lights on. A Jeep, license plate number X three seven LPV, by the way, that's not mine, uh you left your lights on. Um Vice President Scott James Hickory, can you please join me in the corner there? We're gonna present the schools with their awards.
So first up, Hackensack High School B B.
Okay, thank you all for your commitment to sustainability and digital learning. At this point in time, we'll take a five-minute recess for um any member of the public that only came for the high school presentation. Um take five minutes, other than that, we'll continue with the meeting. Thank you.
Portion of our meeting.
Hey, guys, listen up, everybody. We got stuff.
So I'm gonna welcome back to our next portion. I'll introduce now Andrea Parchment, who is our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction and our Affirmative Action Officer. She is going to give our reports on district student performance data and the school safety and data systems for the end of last school year, twenty twenty-one.
Good evening, everyone. Today, tonight, I'm going to present to you the results of our student performance data from the district's access testing. Access is an assessment that we provide to measure how well our English language learners are acquiring the English language as they are on their way to being bilingual or trilingual. The first slide and the following two slides just pretty much shows you the average scale score and the average proficiency score for students in kindergarten through twelfth grade. It also shows you, if you look in the last column, it also shows you the students who are eligible to exit. These students have reached at least a four-point-five to exit. So you have the grade level, you see the number of students tested, the scale score, and the proficiency level. But this is the average for each of these grades. And if you flip to the next, you'll see the same information for grades six through eight. And then next, grades nine through twelve. And this slide is similar to the previous three slides that you saw, except now you see in grades two and three, grades four to five, grades six through eight, and nine through twelve, they actually take the same test, but the level of expectation for students to perform is higher. And the next slide is just a total. Now, this slide shows the six levels in which students can fall based on their scores. It also shows across five years, these results. So, for example, if you look at the school year two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, we had four hundred and seventy-eight students tested. And if you look, it tells you the percent of students who are entering. And let me explain what entering means. Entering is a student is at a level of sophistication with the language that the student hasn't acquired enough language maybe to speak in a complete sentence. So as you go along, the student is emerging, may be able now to speak in phrases. And as you go along, it's developing, and it just becomes more sophisticated, to the point where the student is writing, reading fluently, able to explain the language and the content areas that they are studying. And so, as you can see, if you look across the board, we had twenty-nine percent entering in two thousand seventeen, two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, twenty-three percent emerging, thirty-three percent developing, fourteen percent expanding, and this is where we want our students. And this is not to say if students are low or high. This, again, is showing how our students are acquiring the English language because they are English language learners. Now, I want you to notice that in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, we only had three hundred and eighteen take the test. That is because in March twenty twenty, we all went home. It was COVID, so we weren't able to test. But fortunately, we were able to test students in K through five, K through four before that time. So just take a minute to just look. And then now, last year, if that's all right, now, the last year is twenty twenty-one, which we are reporting, five hundred and eighty students, twenty-two percent entering, twenty-five percent emerging, thirty-one percent developing, twenty percent expanding, two percent bridging, and zero percent reaching a level six. And finally, the last slide really shows you specifically the areas and how our students have performed in each area. And if you look at listening, what I want to note is, if you look at listening, look at the level six. We had two hundred and twelve students performing at a level six. We want our students to at least be at level four, five, or six. So if you add up, we have about fifty-eight percent of students scoring a four or better. And you have to also know, these are not always the same students because students exit, new students come into the program, but the important thing is that they are acquiring the language. If you look at speaking, reading, and writing, so when you look at data, you want to see the areas where there can be enhancement. What can we do? Only thirteen percent of our students in speaking, reading, speaking and reading met a level four or above. So we know that's the area that we need to focus on, as well as writing. And our bilingual students will tell us, you can speak, you can read, but when you can really write in another language, it's really, really good. So now, what we have to do is have some strategies to improve that area. So I am going to have Marielle Messina. She is the director of bilingual world language and ESL, and she's just going to share a slide with you to just explain some of the things that we are going to do to address the speaking, the reading, and the writing.
Thank you, Ms. Parchment. Good evening, everyone. The next slide will show us some of the action steps that the district has taken and strategies to help, to help our students and staff with targeting some of the deficiency we have noticed with access data. All right, so the first action step that we have taken is that the data leadership team comprised of district administrators has met to review the data and has served as liaisons for staff. In addition, we have scheduling improvements that were completed for clustered groups of Ls in each of the six, elementary, middle, and high school. There has also been improved coordination of bilingual ESL program continuum through meetings and shared protocols. Data from the WITA assessments has also been analyzed by staff members, and they have determined the most critical aspects of instructional focus. There have been plenty of opportunities for students to further develop and practice their speaking skills in class. In addition, we have the parent academy, which will be providing parents with information and resources to support their child's English language learning. Professional development and implementation of Jennifer Servail's Reading and Writing Strategies in Grades K to Five has been ongoing. Utilizing student data to develop targeted lessons in the areas of speaking, reading, and writing for small group instruction has been occurring as well. And finally, our elementary school teachers have been utilizing Reading and Writing with English Learners by Valentina Gonzalez and Melinda Miller. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to note, this area, it sounds like just a sentence, but this is a lot of work. And our bilingual teachers, ESL teachers, they really have to provide instruction, not only with acquiring the language, but also teaching the content at the same time. So it really takes a lot. So I'd like to just foster, give a round of applause to our bilingual teachers, all of our teachers. This is another assessment that our students take. This is another assessment that our students take. It's DLM, Dynamic Learning Maps. And this is taken by a small population of our students with special needs. Our students are tested in language arts, and math, and science. And this slide gives you an overview of the results. So we have forty-four percent emerging in language arts, forty-four percent approaching, twelve percent at target, and math, forty-five percent emerging, thirty-three percent approaching, and eleven percent at target. And in science, and I just want to note, science, it was the new test, a very difficult test, so we will be addressing that with students and their specialized programs, IEPs. Now, this slide just breaks the results down by grade level. K through five, fifty percent emerging, thirty-three percent approaching, seventeen percent at target. Six through eight, thirty-three percent emerging, sixty-seven percent approaching the target. And we had no students nine through twelve. And this is the same for math, K through five, thirty-three percent approaching, fifty percent, thirty-three percent emerging, excuse me, fifty percent approaching target, seventeen percent at target. And six through eight, we have sixty-seven percent emerging, but we have thirty-three percent advanced in math. And as I stated before, for science, one hundred percent emerging. And we know we have work to do in that area. And again, this is a small population of students, but an important population of students.
Thank you, Andrea, for that great presentation. I know you have one other.
This is our Student Safety Data System report. So what is SSDS? You can see, this is the Student Safety Data System, and we refer to it as SSDS. It's used to fulfill state and federal reporting requirements, meaning we must report all incidents to the state. Incidents of violence, vandalism, harassment, intimidation, or bullying, weapons offenses, substance offenses, and any other incidents leading to student removal from our district's six schools. This is collected, and it's reported to the state, as well as all HIB trainings and programs and other information are collected and reported to the state. We have two reporting periods. The SSDS reporting year is from September first through June thirtieth. However, we have two reporting periods. We report a mid-year report from September first through December thirty-first, so you'll see me back up here again, probably in February for this year. But now, I'm reporting the end of the year from twenty 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 twenty-one, and this is the end-of-year report. And so what is reported? Incidents that meet the incident type definitions will be on the next slide, the next two slides. Incidents that occur on school grounds while school is in session, including arrival and dismissal, and at school-sponsored functions. Incidents of harassment, intimidation, and bullying that occur off school grounds as well. So these are, you can read this, see this for yourself, these are all the incidents that must be reported. And so here is a result of the incidents in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. And Hackensack High School, you can see the number of incidents reported. It could be violence, vandalism, substances, weapons, HIB, it could be any of those. We had two. Nellie K. Parker, two. Fairmount, Fannie Hillers, and Jackson, zero. Middle School, four. Other incidents leading to removal, okay, zero, except the middle school, we had seven. And then HIB alleged, meaning it was alleged HIB, two at the high school, one at Nellie K. Parker, zero at Fairmount, four, Fannie Meyer Hillers, two at Jackson, fourteen, Middle School. HIB trainings, this is where there are trainings conducted throughout the year. There was one at Hackensack High School, and I need to note, why there was one at Hackensack High School, but Hackensack High School has started restorative practices, so they do a lot more. That might not fall under here, but they've done a lot with restorative practices, which you'll see when we get to the next page. HIB programs, one. HIB trainings, Nellie K. Parker, eleven. HIB programs, seven. Fairmount, twelve trainings, five programs. Fannie Meyer Hillers, five trainings, four programs. Jackson, one training, two programs. Middle School, thirteen trainings, wonderful, and nine programs. And I do need to mention and just give, just some accolades to our anti-bullying specialists from last year. This was all during COVID, so this was done virtually. And just think about all the other things that had to be done. We still gave attention to this because it's important. And then district-wide trainings, that's when our anti-bullying specialist, our lead person, provides training for the anti-bullying specialist. So here we go again, what's the sense of having data if we're not going to address it? So all of these things we have been doing, but at the top, restorative practices at every district school, remember the board resolution where we committed to restorative practices? And I will tell you, all of our schools are implementing it at different levels, but the high school is in year three, and it's, they're doing a fantastic job with that. I think that deserves a round of applause for the high school. And then as well as our elementary schools, all the assistant principals, as well as the, the guidance supervisor work closely together because we're committed to this. And then we have trainings for all district anti-bullying specialists and administrators. Were provided this year, each school's climate and culture committee, under the leadership of a building administrator, meets to review dat- data and trends in order to create an action plan to improve. And we have teachers who serve on this committee, and they contribute well to this. The district's anti-bullying coordinator meets with the district's anti-bullying specialist to review HIB data, to identify ways to improve and address problem areas. And that would be Heather Coleman, and, and she, she is really fantastic in providing these, these trainings, and she often reminds me of things that need to be done, so I, I just want to acknowledge her for that. And then our central office administration provides support to schools by offering professional development opportunities to enhance culture and climate in the school. So when we say we're committed, we put our money where our mouth is toward restorative practices. We have other professional development that we send teachers and administrators to, so we're happy about that, I think. That ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pashman, for that wonderful presentation. Of course, now that we're back in school full-fledged, we will expect some of those data, that data to increase in all those categories.
Thank you. So now we will move on to our student report. We have May Lee Taylor and Victor May.
So hi, everybody. My name is Victor May. I'm the school president here at Hackensack High School, and this is the vice president, May Lee Taylor. So to start off, our student government had just completed their elections. I'm president, vice president. Our secretary is Alana Moe, and our treasurer is Ava Marquez. So we are excited that there are many candidates who will be part of our school culture here, and the student council is planning an outdoor prep rally this year, and the details are being, are being finalized shortly. So the high school completed our strong, our start-striking assessments earlier this month for English nine, English ten, algebra one, geometry, algebra two and science. Last week, all sophomore and junior students took the PSAT. The test results will be used for students to qualify for merit scholarships, practice for the SAP and AP test. Our drop-in center continues to host welcome-back events for our students. Events include mindfulness activities, meet and greets, and pumpkin patch coming soon.
I'd like to give a sports update. Our cross-sports are heading toward the postseason. Our tennis, cross-country, volleyball, soccer and football teams are all vying for the postseason spot. The high school has a rich tradition of athletics, and that is continuing this year. Curtis Whiting was named athlete of the week for his recent football performance. He scored seven touchdowns in a game, breaking the school record. The next week, Amir Whittle was named athlete of the week for his record-breaking performance in cross-country. We are proud of our student athletes. The school also celebrated Hispanic Heritage Month with several fun activities. Floor decorating contest, daily morning announcements celebrating history, songs and classroom activities. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you both so much. So now we will move to our superintendent's report, Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you. Thank you both, Victor and, and May Lee, for your presentation. So on behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to take a brief moment to thank all of our, all in attendance for your participation at our board meetings. During our board meetings, the board welcomes public comments at the designated time noted on the agenda. As a reminder, questions about schools, programs and district operations are best posed to the appropriate administrator and department heads. The board trustees cannot answer questions with regards to the operation of the school district, as that is not within their purview. Those responsibilities fall upon the shoulders of the administrative team. As always, we ask that you contact the appropriate district administrator with your questions and concerns to receive the swift and accurate response. As a general rule, identified problems should be brought to the attention of the person closest to the origin of the problem, so that its resolution can be attempted at that level. When a resolution cannot be found at that level, remedy should be sought at the next level. With that said, we do continue to welcome your comments and participation. Ever since the July Board of Education meeting, there has been some commentary and questions about the topic of assistant principals at the elementary school. At said meeting, after the board came out of its closed session, I committed to the public that I would meet with the Administrators Association on behalf of the board to try to find a mutually beneficial solu- solution to the elementary assistant prin- elementary school assistant principal situation. And I did just that. To be clear, both sides have met to discuss a possible solution, and while I cannot discuss the details of any matters as they pertain to contract negotiations, I can tell you that we made an offer to the Administrators Association, and it was rejected by them. As such, we offered support to the elementary schools by hiring additional social workers and morning and lunch supervision staff to assist the principals with the day-to-day operations of their schools. Next, I would like to ask to our board attorney, Lester Taylor, to provide you all with an update with regards to ongoing contract negotiations with the various unions. Mr. Taylor?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Good evening, everyone. First, just to comment on your report, Mr. Sanchez, regarding public comment. It's just important also for the members of the public, I say this in part because we have a lot of new faces here tonight, that public comment is not a back-and-forth discussion, period. It's the opportunity for the public to ask questions and/or state their concerns. As Mr. Sanchez indicated, if the administration and/or through the board leadership can answer, they can, but it's important that the member of the public speak during their allotted three minutes. When they're completed, the administration and/or board may respond, if appropriate. Just by way of background on negotiations, to the extent we can comment on, in public, from a procedural standpoint, if and when a collective bargaining agreement or a contract expires in a public school setting, it's important to note that the parties, the employees as well as the board are still bound by and otherwise covered by the terms and conditions of that expired agreement. So no one is ever working without a contract in public employment. Employees are still protected by terms and conditions, as well as the board is still obligated by law to follow the terms and conditions in that expired agreement. The board has been negotiating in good faith with various collect, uh, unions, bargaining units in this district, teachers, support, professional associations, maintenance, et cetera, over the past year. Again, the parties have made some progress. When and if the parties were unable to come to a mutually satisfactory agreement, specifically regarding the teaching staff members, the HEA Union, as well as the Office Professionals Union, there's a process under the Public Employment Relations Commission called NPAS, where the parties go to mediation. That's where a third party comes in to try to help the parties come to an agreement. It's a non-adversarial process. It's just one in which a third party comes in to help both sides come a little bit closer to a meeting ground. The board has met with this committee, with the Teachers Union, at least seven times over the last year. Had at least one mediation session, and has a next mediation session coming up on November twenty-second. We hope that there is a positive outcome from that. And with the office prof- support professionals, we've had at least three meetings with them. One mediation session on September twenty-eighth, and we had one scheduled for October twenty-eighth. I believe the union had a scheduling issue, and we look forward to meeting with them soon. So we just want the board, as a body, to have an update, as well as any concern members of the public with respect to the process as prescribed by law, that both sides, for each respective union, have been working in good faith towards reaching a satisfactory and mutually agreeable contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. So moving on, I'm happy to report that on tonight's board meeting, the board will be approving eight new coaches for our intermediate sports program at the middle school. We will be offering cross-country, soccer and volleyball for our boys and girls. We can't wait to see our kids on the courts and fields. In closing, thanks again for your continued presence at our board meetings. Your interest in our schools is commendable. Now on to the enrollment report. Our current enrollment is five thousand three hundred and thirty-five students, and a total of twenty-one HIB investigations were completed this past month. So, you know, needless to say, with all of our students back, we do expect some of these numbers to start climbing, but I can tell you that our teaching staff and, and school administrators are committed to the restorative practices, and, and we hope to keep these, these numbers at bay. That concludes my report.
All right, so we're moving on to public comments. Just reminder, so public participation is governed by the following rules. You should have signed in. State your name, municipality, and if you're affiliated with a group that, you know, makes a difference for this, you know, for these purposes. You have three minutes, and then all statements should go to the presiding officer, and then at the end, the superintendent and/or tonight me will either do our, our best to answer and/or may ask a board member who it most closely relates to in their committee work to help answer that. So we're ready.
Ready for anyone who would like to make public comments, please? Approach the microphone.
Also, just please remind all members of the public in attendance that pursuant to Governor Murphy's executive order, everyone must wear a mask when inside a public school building. Thank you so much for your compliance.
Mr. Vickery, just so you know, it's very hard to understand you. I don't know, they said like the mask was stiff or, so it's a little hard to understand. I, I don't know, I know you can't take it off. Can I just make a quick statement before the timer starts, please? While the HEA did not put out a public statement, I want Mr. Vickery and Mr. Oates to know that we do not condone threats or violence of any kind toward any of you, and especially because your children sit in our classrooms. We checked with like NJA and our legal, which is why collectively we were not able to put out a statement, but I did talk to both of you personally, and I wanted you to know that as a group, that is how we feel, that no one should ever have to be targeted with death threats or anything like that, just because you've chosen to speak out. And we appreciate you, we appreciate the work you're doing, and we may not always agree, but we appreciate you and what you do and what you are attempting to do for this district, just so you know that. But with that, Mrs. Vickery, can I talk to someone? But with that, I felt like tonight was optics. I, I, I'm disappointed that Mr. Powell is not here, because as a board president, just like me, standing here as the president, he represents all of you. To say I'm disappointed is an understatement. To say that we are disappointed is an understatement, because even what you saw with the world language and those departments, that is on the backs of teachers and educators who are consistently, and I've said this for the four years that I've been here, every time I stand up here, who are being disrespected, overworked, and we just, we, we can't seem to get this message across to all of you. There are issues that you know about and that you are pretending that you don't know. So let me point, let me just say this, and because everybody here, most of these people are going to speak tonight, so I don't have to say much, and I thank them for coming. Thank you so much. One of the things I, I heard in a workshop that I attended recently, and it was a man who grew up, and he was in a special ed class, and he said one of the things, and it just stuck with me, he said, "You can tell how a district values its students by the real estate that the students occupy." And so when they occupy crowded classrooms, when they occupy classrooms where IEPs are being violated, when they occupy bilingual classes that had twenty-three second graders I saw today in my school and no para, when they occupy classes where their teachers are being told to give a kid virtual instruction and my, and man eight other or ten other little pre-kindergartners, you, oh, sorry, thirteen, you have a problem with placing value on our children. I don't care if you don't like us, I don't care if you don't like the administrators. You seem to have a problem placing value on our children. So don't sit up here and tell me month after month after month, this is my fourth year as president, and you have said the same things over and over again, some of you. And I'll tell you this, and if Mr. Powell were here, I'll tell you where he puts the property value, on a tennis court. And I guess if our classes were on the tennis court, our kids would have more value in your eyes. Please tell him, I don't want to hear about the tennis courts anymore. And another thing, clean up the fields and clean up the, 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 what is that? The house, the, the, the house, the field house, because raw sewage came up on that field. And you did nothing to clean it, but to gloss over it. Unacceptable, unacceptable, unacceptable. And we're not taking it anymore.
Thank you, ATO.
Just to all members of the public, just please be reminded that pursuant to the public comment policy, you have a allotted timeframe. When your time expires, we would appreciate it if you would respect the time allotted and cease your comments. Thank you so much.
Good evening. Anthony Ziza, Maple Hill Drive in Hackensack, proud parent of a Parker School Special Ed student. I'm here tonight because I'm very troubled by some of the things I'm seeing with the special ed program in this district. Stories I'm hearing from fellow parents, stories of their students in class, poor teachers pulled to cover because we can't get subs, paras, not where they're supposed to be. In general, legal liabilities that are unconscionable. These are the most vulnerable students in our entire system. And yet, I look through the agendas each month. Resignations, churn. What's happening? I can tell you what's happening. When staff feel undervalued, they take off for greener pastures. They look at the fact they have the years in, it's time to retire. For every veteran staffer that we lose with twenty-five, thirty years of experience, we're replacing with somebody that they cannot share that experience with. This board has consistently placed dollars and cents above the need of the students. The staffing, the understaffing is a consequence of teachers feeling undervalued. It's a consequence of an attitude that tells the staff, the people who I rely on to make sure that my son is getting the education he deserves, telling them that they are overpaid and underworked. This is something that needs to be addressed. We need to fund our program adequately. We need to make sure staffing is acceptable, and we need to make sure that we are not leaving teachers without special ed qualifications to watch over students because somebody is needed to cover a class. I know what my son is taking out of his education here. He comes home, he loves his teachers, he loves the people that he meets every day, and I really want to be able to say that he's getting what he deserves, but I'm not sure. Thank you.
Good evening. Joyce Wickersheim, Fairmount School, HEA Building Leader. I'm speaking on behalf of the teachers at Fairmount School. On one Friday in September, we did not have an administrator in the building. On one Friday in September, we did not have an administrator in the building. An incident occurred with some students during recess. The incident was of a physical nature, and the student who reported the problem was sent to see our school guidance counselor. The counselor came up to the classroom to follow up on what had occurred, but stated she was needed back in the office, so she took all of the students involved downstairs with her. She was handling the job of two administrators in addition to her own counseling, any one of those three jobs in a lot for an individual to handle, not to mention all three at one time. During a year where so much of our professional learning centers on meeting students' physical and social, emotional needs, decisions are not being made to support the safety and social, emotional well-being of our students. This is a disservice to our students, and in order for our guidance counselors and other specialists to meet the increasing needs of our student population, they need to be given the ability to effectively do their own job. Essentially, the services are not provided to our students when guidance and other staff are used to stopgap measures. Cutting down on building administrators at a time when the workload hasn't increased and the safety is utmost important does not seem logical at all. When the decisions were made to cut back on elementary assistant principals, a plan should have been put in place to ensure that the schools would not operate without an administrator. During a pandemic especially, there must be a contingency plan for absences which occur even during a normal year. The failure to come up with a plan to cover administrative absences is unacceptable, as was the failure of a district to take action and send in an administrator from somewhere in the district to cover our school on that day. Our school guidance counselor is truly one of the best. She is highly effective at her job, working with the students, staff, and the families of our community. However, if the weight of running the school is placed upon her shoulders while the expectation and necessity of continuing to do her own job simultaneously exists, we risk burning out one of Hackensack's finest educators. We cannot sit back and let, watch this happen to our colleague, our school, and most importantly, to our students. Some other concerns that were brought to our attention that are not acceptable. There are part-time and full-time paras who are not highly qualified and certified, covering teachers that are absent while we do not have subs in our schools. Nurses, due to the increased amount of students being sent to the office and the added workload that they have with keeping track of absences, students that have been tested and not are not getting adequate time to take a lunch and prep. Special area teachers and counselors are also covering classes that teachers can attend PDs, resulting in classroom teachers missing preps, schedules being changed, and missing valuable teaching time. These are not acceptable things. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bridgette. I am a stakeholder and resident here in Hackensack. As I stand here before you, I'd like to thank the B.O.E., first and foremost, of the denouncement of the threat that was placed upon two sitting members in a timely manner. As a stakeholder here in the city of Hackensack, it was very disturbing to think that someone would place a threat on another human being's life and bring disruption to a person's household that has children. This is what I call a keyboard thug or a bully, somebody not bold or brave enough to confront a person but willing to bully behind a computer. It's sad that the community and district, even though it was late, I'm glad it wasn't never, did not rally around this heinous act. What I would say is the act of a coward, a person with no humanity in the world of cruelty. We need to start showing each other some compassion for one another. It's disgusting to think that a person could sit behind a computer and then have the audacity to mail it to someone's home. They just got the wrong person, but if they got the right person, it would be a different story. But I'm so glad that the B.O.E. decided to actually take place and step upon it as quickly as possible. Thank you so much.
Okay, good evening, good evening. My name is Nikisha Fullmore. I'm a Hackensack resident, Anderson Street, and I'm also a parent and an employee of Hackensack Schools. So excuse me, but these topics are very personal to me. With my three minutes, there are a few issues and concerns I would like to bring to your attention, and it has already been shared with you today, but I need to speak with you about them, and I ask for you to please speak on them before we adjourn this evening, if you can. One of them is the shortage of support staff, lunch aids, and paras in our schools. Many paras are being pulled to cover other classes, and this leaves our students who need support without support. When you pull our paras and support staff from classes, this also leaves our teachers stressed out, burnt out, and without the rapport for our students, it's great inconsistency. Two, the support staff shortage will lead to many of our good teachers and administrators feeling as if they are not supported, hence helpless. This brings me to the retiring of our dear Ms. Ashton Low, principal of Fairmount Elementary. I know she has worked tirelessly without VP support during this pandemic, and now is retiring for what I feel is not what she wants to do, but something that she has to do for her health, for her mental health and her standing. And the board has not even prepared for her successor, so I'm asking for you to please speak to that point, because if we don't prepare for a successor, again, that leaves the students, the teachers, and administrators helpless. Third is the district preparing to offer our children academic support. Coming back, many of them are below average. Are there funds being put towards programs that can assist with getting our children back on track? School is open. Now please, support our teachers and our students by giving them not what they need but what they deserve. Thank you.
Good evening. Patty Burleson, third grade teacher. Last month, some of us were confused about comments about the buildings looking abandoned, as we have little control over that, but I can tell you that our classrooms were welcoming with bulletin boards and banners and name tags and smiles. Last week, last month, we came to the Board of Ed meeting that night to be seen on a night we were expected to be in our buildings. Back-to-school night was scheduled the same night as a Board of Ed meeting that we felt we should attend. When I first began teaching, I said no all the time. Can I go to the bathroom? No. Can I go to the closet? Can I get a drink? No. I was trying to establish control, but you begin to realize that you can't say no for the sake of saying no. You have to say yes sometimes. Can I use crayons? Yes. Can I get something from the closet? Sure. Can I bring this book home? Yes. It builds trust and it shows respect. Back-to-school night for us was an easy yes for you. Parents were not coming to the building. We would present virtually. It would stand to reason we could do that from home. That was an easy yes. When the board tells us it's about the children, we all nodded in agreement. We are in it for the children. When teachers are treated with respect and kindness, that is for the children too. We are shamed for mentioning contracts or money. Teaching is a unique profession where an employee's nurturing nature is leveled against them. At the same time, those who say it's about the children are saving money by having us share assistant principals. This is untenable. My school is losing a fabulous principal because what is being asked of her is untenable. One Friday in September, our principal was out sick. Our assistant principal was at her other school. We had no administrator in the building. Our school counselor and our reading specialist were asked to pick up administrative responsibilities. We began to reach out to central office about who could cover dismissal time, because those ladies had children they had to pick up last minute. No one would be coming. At one point, we expressed to each other, what a good job we did, everything, we worked well together, luckily nothing happened, but something did happen. After school, while students were walking home, an incident occurred that required a risk assessment. A risk assessment is a very big deal. We need authorities, counselors, all hands on deck. The only person in the building was our new secretary. She's very new and had no administrator in the building. We've only just begun, and it's clear that assistant principal is not a part-time job. Principals already are buried under paperwork rather than being a presence and a force in the school for both the faculty and the students. Children are having issues on the playground because they aren't accustomed to playing together, and now we don't have any administrators to help them solve those problems. Okay, when we have PD, they're herded into auditorium, and if it was a rainy day, that's the second time in the auditorium, and it's no wonder they don't know how to play. Okay? You're saving money, but it's not for the kids.
Hi, I'm Pat Shepherd, Child Study Team at the high school. There are two significant characteristics that define a toxic dysfunctional family. One is that the parent or parent dyad evades responsibility, whatever the cost, for the problems or dysfunction in the family, and will always identify a scapegoat as being the source of the problem. The scapegoat is always a weaker family member, always one of the children because of the power differential, usually the same child, but it can also switch from one child to another depending on what responsibility the parents are trying to deflect. The result is despondent, traumatized, angry children. The second characteristic is that the dysfunctional family is what is called a closed system. Outsiders are kept ignorant of the family's internal toxic workings. On the outside to the world, the family looks efficient, functional, and loving, invested in appearing to be the perfect family. The parents work hard to maintain the image, sometimes threatening the other family members or withholding essential resources to coerce them into playing along. So let's take this template and substitute parents for district administration. And when I say administration, I want to be very clear that I mean the superintendent's office and the board. The building administrators, that is, the principals, vice principals, supervisor of guidance, work so hard and are doing the best they can with limited resources and support. But going back to the toxic dysfunctional system, based on what we've heard tonight, that's what the administration has become, and we are the despondent, traumatized, and angry children. Morale is very, very low. Administration makes misguided decisions and then evades responsibility for the fallout, and as we've heard, the fallout is big, but it's the building administrators, teachers, and other school personnel who are vilified and set up to take the blame. Administration deflects from the mess by talking about social, emotional learning and caring for our kids, as if caring for the kids is not what we do every single day. Administration talks about the new lovely tennis courts, sorry Donna, I said tennis courts, repairing the football field and adding shiny new lockers to the high school to demonstrate how much it cares, but as we have all heard from my colleagues, this is just gaslighting. Administration's self-proclaimed benevolence is a collective fantasy of misinformation. The truth is, the system is broken. To our administrative moms and dads, you have failed to prevent the roof from collapsing. The good news is now that it has collapsed, at least the toxic mess can be exposed. I am grateful and honored to be among peers this evening as we attempt to expose the systemic dysfunction and work towards restoring the district to something that we can be proud to be a part of. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Shawna Shortridge, teacher, parent, Hackensack resident. Adrian, you're gonna have to give me a little more time, because it takes time to breathe under this mask. Okay. I respectfully stand before you tonight, asking you to reconsider splitting the VPs. Lunch and extra social worker is not enough. I had the great honor of interning with Ms. Whitaker last summer through the summer of this year. I have in front of me not one but two binders of documented work completed in my internship. The areas in my binder addresses curriculum, finance, observation, scheduling, attendance, class placements, and so on, not to mention the different areas under each umbrella. The work that administrators do is unbelievable. It's difficult, it's tiring, it's stressful, but it's necessary. There's no doubt that Mrs. Ashton Low, Mrs. Whiting, and Mr. Moran are doing their personal best. However, with all due respect, like you Superintendent Sanchez, they need one, if not two, assistance. You have two phenomenal leading ladies, Mrs. Parchment and Mrs. Marks, who help to carry your load. It's not that I don't believe you're not capable of fulfilling your obligations, but with a district this size, six schools, and almost 6,000 students, you need assistance. We are all imperfect human beings living in an imperfect world, but can we strive for a piece of perfection? It hurts me to see what we're doing to each other as a district, but more importantly, as people. Why can't we set an example for what a progressive district embodies? I commend this district on many things in the effort to make progress, however, in doing so, we hurt the very community which stands behind us. In my last class, which was school law, I proudly used this as examples for our district's main page. School policies, budgeting, thank you, Ms. Zino. Special education, thank you, Mr. Pemberton. Cultural relevancy, thanks, Ms. Parchment. School letter to parents about homeschooling, Ms. Burke Essa, thanks, Ms. Jones. School law, thanks, Mr. Mallon. Hibbs search and seizure policies, LGBTQ, domestic violence at the high school, thanks, Mr. Cecil King. Board policy, procedures, and training, thanks, Mr. Powell, who's not here. And so am expecting the professor to come back and criticize my district, but no, she wrote numerous times in our Blackboard conversations, Shawna, quote, "This is a great letter, this is a great tech platform for parents." I must admit, I was more critical of our district, knowing that there's so much we can do and need to improve. She was complimenting the fact that there are other districts which do far less and far worse. Some are neighboring districts. Do you not see how many people I acknowledge? That's because one person cannot do the job of many of the things I outlined. It took a group of intelligent people to help me find answers to my research, my questions, and helped me earn my EDS in administration, which I am not compelled to start anytime soon, due to what I see current administrators dealing with daily. Board members, you work so hard, but you too need help. You form committee chairs, AKA leaders, but here she has help. Not because the chair, you're gonna have to pardon me, not because the chair is incompetent or incapable of-
Excuse me ma'am, your time is up, thank you.
I'm taking a minute from someone else.
Ma'am, really not, because the policy doesn't allow you to do that, so thank you. Your time is up, please have a seat. Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Excuse me ma'am, please, excuse me miss.
Board members work so hard, but you two need help.
Excuse me, can you please state your name?
My name is Gwenny Burt, Hackensack.
Thank you so much for complying with the board's policy.
You form committee chairs, AKA leaders, but he or she has help. Not because the chair is incompetent or incapable of performing the duties, but because we all need help with something. Mr. Lawyer, you too need an assistant to help you sift through the case files, some as thick as the dust in-
In accordance with board policy, please address your comments to the chair, not to any individual. Thank you so much for respect and complying with the board's policy.
To conclude, excuse me, I'm still speaking. I'm speaking from experience, sitting, standing, walking, and even trying to sleep, because Ms. Whitaker does not sleep. In my administrative capacity and position as an intern to complete over 700 hours, getting only a snippet, the workload cannot be fulfilled by one person on a daily basis. My pastor teaches that if he had, if the head is not right, the entire body suffers. Think about what you're doing to the head of each school and how it trickles down to the teachers and the students. The teachers are exhausted beyond exhausted. In conclusion, let's redirect our focus to building a better school district by setting a clear and shared focus, high standards and expectations for everyone, effective school leadership through collaboration and communication. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Megan Graham. I'm a resident of Hackensack, New Jersey. It is quite concerning that the B.O.E. made the decision to cut only elementary school assistant principals and approve it along, although, excuse me, community members questioned it at the board meeting in July. We were promised that you all will look into this matter. I think that it's imperative that our students get more support rather than- I think that it's imperative that our students get more support rather than receiving less. Don't you think that they have suffered enough with COVID? Can you answer these questions for me tonight? What is the protocol when our principal is out sick and our shared assistant principal is scheduled to work at Nellie K. Parker? Should our schools be operating with no administrator in the building? Now that Ms. Ashton Loeb is leaving in January, beginning of February, what are their next steps for our children? Is there interviews in place? Will the interviewee shadow Ms. Ashton Loeb, who knows our buildings inside and out? So who will be hired and when? And when will the news be shared with the students and the parents? This is a total disservice to our children and should be a question of concern for this board. As the PTA president, concerned parent, and advocate for all children, too much change is not always good for them. If our main concern is about the future of Hackensack, take a moment and think about how this change will affect the future of our children. We need more administrative coverage. Fairmont is the largest elementary school in this district, and yet, we have the same coverage as the three other elementary schools. We are dealing with COVID and we get less? We are Fairmont strong, please help us get stronger by adding more support. We need more, not less. Ms. Megan, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Good evening. My name is Albania Bojos, and I am the PTA Vice President of Fairmont School. I am currently pursuing my second master's degree, not that anyone care, but my love for school came because I have had so many wonderful teachers and administrators in my lifetime who have inspired me to keep learning, just like the many amazing teachers we have in our school district. That being said, it's so sad to see what's going on in our schools. We have so many wonderful teachers and administrators who are not getting the support and need that they deserve. My son has been at Fairmont for three years so far, and his teachers have been phenomenal. Ms. Kukuzza, Mrs. Wickersham, and Ms. G, thank you so much for what you do for our children every day. And Ms. Ashton Loeb, thank you so much for doing the impossible. You are the best, absolutely the best. I am so saddened that our fantastic principal, Mrs. Ashton Loeb, is leaving the school. She is someone who has dedicated her entire life to this kid. What she has accomplished, especially during the pandemic, is beyond remarkable. But no one should have to do it without any help. Now, if you ask me, Mrs. Ashton Loeb has shown day after day how much she cares, not only with words, but with her actions, or like some people here on this panel. I seriously don't understand how taking away resources and not providing help is beneficial for our kids. It is simple math, really. Subtraction always equals less. And I have that tough time understanding how less is good for our children. You rushed everyone to come back in person, and now that we are, you're taking away resources? As a member of the Fairmont School community, and more importantly, as a parent, I ask that you stop talking the talk and stop walking the walk. You say you care, but your action says otherwise. Just don't say it, show it. Once again, to all the teachers and administrators here tonight, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Frank Campolo, 50-year resident of Hackensack. Went to Hackensack Public Schools, an educator in Hackensack Middle School. I just wanna celebrate, I'm celebrating right now, I'm very happy for Word Language, very excited to, you know, see the successes of the students at the high school level, and definitely look forward to the other levels, you know, just seeing successes and improvements. I really appreciate that. So I'm here also to support my colleagues, a little short and sweet, thank you very much for having me.
Hello. Good evening, board. My name is Mike Graham. I'm originally Hackensack. And, you know, my little issue is having respect from some members of the board, you know? I don't condone violence or anything like that, or any of that stuff I heard tonight about death threats. But also, like, you know, for board members to have respect for, you know, the parents of the community and the teachers and the other kids of the community, you know? And, um, you know, one morning, I'm dropping my kid off, and a gentleman is blocking, you know, the intersection for over five minutes, five to seven minutes. You know, I have to go through things as well. Got out my vehicle, asked the gentleman to move, you know, to pull up a little bit so we could get space, the whole 15, 20 cars backed up. Gentleman tells me, "Don't worry about it. I'm the Vice President of the Board, go sit back in your vehicle." This is what he tells me. And I'm like, "Are you kidding me?" I'm coming up to you, you know, very nice, polite, and asking you, you know, and as a board member, you should say, "Hey, you know, you should not be blocking the intersection. You're supposed to be trying to, you know, let everything move through slow, you know, smoothly, and be respectful to, you know, other people." You can't, you can't ask for respect and don't give respect. You know, we need to respect one another and respect our children, and he had children in the vehicle as well. Talking to me like this, "Get back in your vehicle," this is only school morning. I just don't appreciate that. And I think that, you know, we should talk and we respect each other as human beings. We are here, and we want our kids to get the best education, and we should not communicate with each other at all like that. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Can you hear me? Okay. Hi, my name is Suzanne Greenberg. I'm a pre-K special ed teacher at the ECDC. I am here in support of the part-time paraeducators at the Hackensack ECDC. As a special education pre-K teacher at the ECDC, I know how valuable a properly trained paraeducator is for a classroom and students. The paraeducators at the ECDC are highly skilled and extremely hardworking. They are critical to ensuring a safe, nurturing, and successful classroom for our students. The para's duties include helping to maintain a safe classroom by assisting in rigorous cleaning, helping to implement instructional practices for small group activities, helping to maintain a safe and supportive instructional environment, monitoring documented student progress using checklists and charts, assisting and teaching students basic self-help skills during meal times, assisting students with toileting needs, and most importantly, being hands-on and interactive with their young learners all day long. They literally don't get a break. With that said, I feel strongly that our part-time educators are long due for a raise in their hourly rates. Five years ago was the last time that our part-time paraeducators received a raise, five years ago. With the cost of living increasing every year, especially during COVID times, our part-time paras deserve some sort of increase in pay. Not only have our part-time paras not received a raise in five years, but there is zero growth opportunities available for them to work hard and be rewarded with for full-time positions. Why, you might ask? This is because our district no longer offers full-time para-professional positions, which means no matter how well a para performs in their job, they'll never be rewarded with a full-time position. What incentive does the district give our part-time paras? How does the district expect to keep highly qualified employees when they do not show them that they're a valuable asset to our district? It is clear that there's no incentive and the district does not value them enough to give them opportunities for growth. Right now, we have a huge shortage in para-professionals, and it's not only due to COVID. They are fleeing our district and going to other districts that offer them more opportunities, better pay, and our health benefits. It has been very concerning that we have recently been informed that our district is now hiring lunch aids at the rate of $22 an hour. I understand that having lunch aids is very important, but the fact that this is higher hourly rate than some of our experienced paras is frankly unfair, especially knowing that part-time para salary has been frozen for some time at the lower hourly rate, which is $20 per hour. Our current part-time paras are highly qualified, meaning they must pass a para protest and have a minimum, or have a minimum of 60 college credit. Our lunch aid's duties are significantly less compared to those of our part-time paras. By paying the lunch aids more than some of our part-time paras, it's devaluing the importance of their position and harms the team's already low morale. The district needs to work harder to keep our qualified part-time paras for our students.
To the chair, if I just, in order to, I guess, manage expectations, just remind members of the public, specifically union leadership, as they may be aware, that pursuant to the Public Employment Relations Commission, the parties, specifically the board, but also the union, cannot negotiate in public. So when it comes to salary and full-time, part-time, et cetera, as I indicated in my update earlier, the parties are in negotiations. The board cannot and will not respond to anything that is a negotiable topic. Just want everyone to be aware of that, to the extent that you're requesting responses. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sharnetta Harris, and I'm a part-time para ECDC. And I just wanted to continue with what Ms. Greenberg, where she left off. Thank you, Ms. Greenberg. Not only have we not received a raise in five years, but also taking consideration that we arrive before the students and we leave after the students. Our work day is a full-time day. And we are here giving our concerns. I understand there's no negotiation that can be done tonight, but we are requesting our concern, we are stating our concerns, and we are requesting that our part-time paras be considered at some point to be made full-time, that it will alleviate some of the issues that we're having as a staffing issue right now. And also, also, when it comes to a point where we have to have lunch aids that are making more than our para-professionals, who are there all day with the students, who assist the teachers, I arrive, my work time starts at 8:55, I arrive at 8:25. That is my choice, because my teacher has to do her prep, she has to do her lesson plans, and I cannot arrive at 8:55 and set out breakfast for our students and our children arrive five minutes later. That is chaotic. We have to have, we have to have some kind of balance in our school and our classroom so that when our children, when our students enter, they enter into a calm environment, and they can feel it, they see it, and they know it. And we cannot have someone assisting in the ABA classes who are not trained. Because what happens is it increases, it increases health issues for the students and for the teachers as well. So what we're doing tonight is we're asking you to take in consideration, to give us some help. We need help. And ECDC is where it starts. We are the beginning, before our students enter into kindergarten all the way up to the 12th grade. This is where it starts. So we're just here tonight to voice our concerns, to put it on the table so that you can take a moment, understand our concerns, so that we can continue with this program. We need this program. I am a Hackensack resident, my daughter graduated from Hackensack High School, I was a PTA president and a holder for three years. I, I just, we need help, thank you.
Hello, my name is Danielle Kukuzza, and I'm happily at Fairmont School, I'm a special ed teacher there for preschool, but I'm formally part of the ECDC family. So I'm speaking up for that ECDC family. It starts with, in 2013, an opportunity arose for the opening of the Early Childhood Center. This magnificent idea was created to free up space in the, for the growing students in the elementary schools, and it would give the early childhood educators an opportunity to collaborate, work together, integrate classes, and keep all of the therapists in one building. We were all hesitant to the changes, not knowing what this new chapter would bring to us, and we were saddened to leave our former homes and our work families, but we did not have a choice, we moved. Being that resilient educators that we are and para-professionals, we created a new home for our students in the building that was not equipped to hold three and four-year-olds in gen ed or special ed. We were given one building administrator and one secretary, while all the other schools had two formerly in their buildings. Our entire school had only one full-time custodian with a part-timer on the side. In that short amount of time that we have been in ECDC, we have gone through four different building administrators and four or five different administrative assistants. Our building supervisors and building administrators knew that we were being mistreated, and they told us that our hands were tied and they couldn't help us. When the concerns were presented to administration and the board office and the board members, we were told that the, that we are, the residency is temporary, excuse me. We were told the district was leasing the building for two to three years. We were told that the plans were in the workforce, state-of-the-art building with all the amenities and staffing, we would not need to conduct a truly successful, that we would need to conduct a truly successful ECDC program, early childhood program. Well, it's nine years later and we're still there. And I could tell you, I know some people helped that our building, that they had students that, when we were in, they were in preschool, that helped with our building. Before our move to ECDC, every pre-K teacher was assigned to two half-day sessions except for our full-day ABA programs. All general education classes had full-time paras, and each special education class had two to three paras, sometimes they had four full-time paras, depending on the needs of the students, to assist with the rigorous daily scheduling and challenging behaviors. Now, we are lucky if we have one part-time para all the time, or at times, teachers are being left alone with no assistance because we are short-staffed, and it's true. And it's, I know it's, my administrator tries not to do anything like, you know, not to have me alone, but sometimes I'm alone, because if my para goes out sick, we can't get somebody to be with me. I have to dismiss at the day, at the end of the day, in the other building with nobody there, but I also have to do my whole day and not take a lunch. We need to help.
Good evening. My name is Carmela Zuccaro, formerly Carmela Tripodi. I was first hired in this district when I was 16 years old. This October, I've been employed by the Hackensack Public School System for 29 years, proudly. I'm also a graduate of Hackensack High School, and I'm proud to say I'm from Hackensack. One, this is a continuation from Danielle. When we began at ECDC, we were also told that the students will no longer get the special instructions that they were given in the elementary schools, for example, physical education, art, and music. We do not even have an outdoor area or playground, which is required by the state. Our 40-minute prep time was now moved to the first period of the school day because of this decision. The 40 minutes included the 10 minutes that every other teacher in the district gets from 8:20 to 8:30, aside from their 40 total minutes of prep. Those first 10 minutes of school allow for teachers and paras to check in, check mailboxes, get to the classroom, and turn on computers. We now have to include those duties within our prep time. We also had to cut our preparation time short by another 10 minutes because we were required to greet our students and parents at 8:50 every morning, so we would be able to start our instruction at 9:00 AM sharp. From 8:25 until 9:00 AM, from 8:25 until 9:00, teachers are required to clean and sanitize tables, chairs, and manipulatives that are used daily, go downstairs to the cafeteria to pick up breakfast, set the breakfast up at the tables for each student, create lesson plans, create materials for the units of study that are added into the different learning centers every single day, log on to TS Gold, check the students' individual documentation status on TS Gold, identify the objectives that the students will be working on for that day, and score the documentation that were recorded the day before, log on to Genesis, log on to our online lunch menu, because it changes daily and we needed updated versions and they were not notified. All of these duties are to be done before 9:00 AM. Based on these requirements, it is evident that we need another prep time added to our schedule. Every other teacher and para in the elementary school dismiss at 2:50, which allows for teachers and paras to return to the classroom, clean up, and sign out by 3:05. We, on the other hand, were told that our students needed to have instructional time until 3 o'clock. This gives us five minutes to dismiss three and four-year-olds who were picked up by the car or very late buses, needless to say, we have never been able to clock out by 3:05. We are here asking for your help. We are not here to complain. We are, we have been trying to meet with you for the past nine years that we've been at ECDC privately. We've called you over to our school, we've called board members over, we've called administrators. We're begging you for help. We're begging you for help. We are barely making it out alive.
Hi, my name is Barbara Kroniak. I'm a special ed teacher at ECDC. I'm going to continue from what Carmella said. As highly educated professionals, our job description as a Hackensack Public School teacher has changed drastically these past few years. We are not treated like the professionals we work so hard to become. We are required to be the uncertified gym teacher, setting up the same equipment daily in the gymnasium for the students to utilize to make up for the thirty to forty minutes of outdoor play that they do not receive. We have become the uncertified art teacher, the music teacher, and the lunch aids. We were told that lunch is an instructional time for our students. Our instructional time is spent opening up milk cartons and prepackaged microwave lunches that are difficult for our three and four-year-olds to open. We have to serve lunch to our students, lay out their personal mat wood fitted sheets and blankets, and we have to put students down to nap before taking lunch, which is, which is never before twelve forty or twelve fifty. Some of us had to take lunch at one twenty-five and as late as two o'clock. Some teachers have been able, unable to take their full forty minutes because of our strict schedule. Some teachers are hesitant to take a lunch because they do not feel comfortable leaving their students with lunch aids that have been hired to fill in for certified para-professionals that are no longer working for a district or have been transferred out of our school within the past few weeks to fill in for the shortage of staff members in other schools in this district. Because of the many changes in our programs, we have also lost many valuable employees. Teachers and paras have applied to other districts with less pay because our requirements have become physically and mentally debilitating. I would just like to say as an ABA teacher, that without the paras, they work just as hard. They have to do so much training on rethink and all the curriculum that we have to do, and they're not getting any incentive for it. They're not, there's no reason for them to stay. They're not getting what they deserve. And they are working very hard, could not do without them. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Domenica D'Angelo, also a product of the Hackensack Public Schools. The ECDC teachers and para-professionals are some of the hardest-working women in this district. They are trained professionals that work with students that need individualized care every second of the day. It is physically and mentally exhausting. They are trained in DTI and handle with care. Our para-professionals have been greatly disrespected by the choices that have been made by the present and former board members and administrators regarding their status in this district. We have part-time paras that have never missed a day of work. Never missed a day of work last year. And she was never acknowledged for her dedication to her job. We have now offered uncertified lunch aids more money hourly than our certified para-professionals. The lunch aids are working less hours, they have fewer responsibilities, and they're making more money than the trained professionals working in our building. This has devastated our entire staff. Our part-time para-professionals work fifteen to twenty minutes shy of a full-time worker every day. And again, they have not received a raise. Some of our ABA profesh, para-professionals have required, are required their RBT certification and do not get any additional pay or stipends for their highly intensified and specific job they do every day. Some have come in early without being paid extra because they know how much work the teachers need to prepare before the students come into the classroom. It was not for the, if it's not for the love of the students and their professionalism and the respect that we have for one another, some of the paras that are left in our building will have no other choice but to leave and find a different district to work in. As most have already done so. A staff member wrote a letter to the board members and board office listing the ramifications for not hiring full-time paras. She never received a response. We have asked them, we have asked them to, for them to reconsider keeping our para-professionals full-time. We knew what the outcome and these decisions would be. Really quick, we here not to ask you, not to tell you, we're here to beg you. We need your support. Like my mother always said, if you have a problem, you go to family. You are our family. We are coming to you and everybody else that makes these important decisions for our school district and your children. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Veronica Hernandez and I too am a product of the Hackensack School District. I am a preschool teacher, a special ed preschool teacher at Jackson Avenue School, and I was at ECDC when we first opened. Well, here we are. Many of the teachers in our school have never had two part-time paras that were supposed to be replaced by full-time paras as promised. They were only given one part-time para, which means that at a certain point of the day, the teachers left alone with up to fifteen three- and four-year-old children. Due to the pandemic, we are faced with challenges that we have never seen in this magnitude. To say we are short-staffed is an understatement. However, we question the safety of our students due to the staffing. Please, do not take our words here tonight as an attack against you. We are barely making it out alive each day. We walk past each other in the hallways in disbelief that what was once the happiest and best career choice for all of us is now making us mentally and physically sick because of poor planning at our expense. We are here because we know you have the power to make these changes. We are willing to all sit with you on our own personal time and try to come up with better solutions that will work for everyone involved. A brief walk through our building will not give you the experiences that you are dealing with daily, that we are dealing with daily. This matter is urgent and it needs to become a priority. So please, sincerely, Hackensack Free Kindergarten Staff.
How are you? Corey Carroll. Teacher, product of the school system, parent of two graduates. This is not a problem that started due to the pandemic. Please understand that. This has been happening for over ten years in this district. From superintendents to directors of special ed, change after change after change. We had to keep doing what we had to do for our children. But we're getting sick. People are getting diagnosed with cancer at rates that are unimaginable. Why? The stress is unbelievable. I, I think, when I get ready for work and I take a shower is where I do my best thinking. And I say, why, after twenty-six years, is it so miserable? But there's another group of people that can stand with us, and those are the nurses. Why are the nurses so miserable? And you know what I came to the conclusion? We are women on the front lines. We are not treated as professionals. Because look around this room and the women here are standing up. Where are the men? It's the women that are fighting for our lives. From para-professionals, they're women and you're paying them twenty dollars. My daughter just got a job babysitting for twenty-five dollars. Babysitting. You're talking about special ed kids who need certain things and twenty dollars an hour is atrocious. There has been a job posting for a high school teacher for eight months. Eight months. How many applications do you think we got? I don't even get the answer. It's zero. Do you know why? People don't want to come here. They're not coming. I got four phone calls from four different districts this summer. For, for me to leave here with my teacher handicapped and you're there. What are we doing? Waiting for the, the call like if you build it, they will come? Nobody's coming. They pay twenty dollars an hour? Look at, uh, Burton County Special Services. They're, the, the, the paras can leave today. Full-time benefits. Look it up. You expect people to stay here? And you know who's hurt? The kids in the special ed department that have not had a teacher yet. With a classroom in the high school, with a classroom in the middle school, with a classroom in Lowly Parker. And you know what? The blood is on your hands because you can make a difference. You can try and start doing initiatives. Our districts are doing initiatives to pull people in. We sit here like they're going to drop from the sky. It is embarrassing. Our district is imploding. It's imploding. I am talking people off the ledge daily, crying. You're leaving. Your, your staff is leaving. Your special ed department is leaving.
You should have let me go before you. Well, that child's back to follow. Oh my goodness. Buenas noches. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight. If you know me, I'm very shy. And I'm very emotional and I always cry, and I will cry. Uh, you'll cry with me because that's how I feel. My name is Soraya Gonzalez. And I'm a Spanish teacher at the high school. So I was here because of the world language presentation. But after my students left and I saw my colleagues speak, I could not leave. I believe blue and gold. I came from Columbia in nineteen eighty-two to the middle school. Graduated middle school. Was a student at Hackensack High School here. ESL bilingual student. Graduated in nineteen eighty-eight. Did a lot of things, but I always knew I wanted to come back to Hackensack and teach. I wouldn't, I always said that I didn't want to teach anywhere else. I was on the board event twice, so I know what it's like to be on the other side when I was in my twenties. And I decided to be a, um, Spanish teacher, to be a role model to my students. And you see the wonderful programs that we have. And for the first time in eighteen years, I went to my principal and I said, "I can't believe I'm thinking about leaving." Because my heart is here. But what I hear, this is not Hackensack. It's not. It's not the Hackensack that I know from when I came from Columbia. It's not. From what I hear from all the schools. We get kids coming into the high school every day. We don't have enough teachers. The ESL bilingual Spanish classes are full to capacity. What are we doing? I see myself in those kids. I see myself in those kids. I talk to them, I tutor them, I talk, come after school, I do whatever. And, and you see the same, the same from all the teachers. But you're the ones, because I was there to make these decisions. And you don't want to see us leave. I really, really, really want you to consider these decisions. I, I cannot believe what I hear. And again, I'm saying the same thing over and over. This is not the Hackensack that I know from nineteen eighty-three till now. I've done a lot of different things. I worked in Wall Street. I have two masters. I worked in social work. I taught college. But this is where I want to be. I love these kids. I love the kids like all of us do here. But please, please, listen to everyone. Muchas gracias.
Hi, my name is Tanya Felice-Fatron. How are you? So, um, I too came because I was invited to come. And I was so, I mean, I was back there taking pictures of the students presenting because out of all of them, they were presenting six are mine. And I would never go back to engineering. The kids tell me all the time, "Why are you here? Why don't you want to be an engineer?" I did seven years and teaching to me has been the most rewarding career I had. And a lot of people ask me where I teach and I teach in Hackensack. I'm not from Hackensack, but the pride that I see. Whoever came up with that T-shirt that the kids are wearing now was a genius. Because there's so many different districts and now I see a little bit more blue and gold. I see a little bit more pride. I, I teach STEM to a lot of freshmen and the program has grown. There's a lot of robotics students now. I have twenty kids. I can't push them away. I'm very, very proud of the connection that I've been having with Fairleigh Dickinson University and a lot of students are pursuing some aspect of engineering because they're being introduced early and, and all these good things. And I feel awful that I've been in a little bubble. There's five of us, well, now newly six in my, in my, um, department. And I had no idea that this was happening. I made a point this year to participate in Hispanic Heritage Month, which was great. Thank you, Soraya. It was phenomenal walking around with our dresses. But also made an appointment to say, this year, I'm going to participate more in HEA. I'm going to get a little bit more knowledge. I actually was, I thank you for, um, allowing me to participate, Cassine, because you were one of the people I spoke to most. But the idea that, my, my children are a little older. They're already, uh, my youngest has graduated high school. But to, to think that any of my family members who are in Hackensack uh, could suffer, have their son or daughter suffer because their teachers don't have enough to provide for them really breaks my heart. And as a fellow teacher, I can't imagine not having that pencil. I teach drawing. I teach pencils and computers and not having all those equipment, I can't imagine not being able to say to a kid, "Here's a, a learning tool for you to be able to, to explore and move on even further." So please listen to my colleagues. Please listen to the ideas that our students are our future. And, um, blue and gold, I mean, come on, if you don't believe it, then you're not really here. And that's part of who we are. And honestly, I, I'm very proud to be a teacher here. And I've been trying to promote, I'm trying to get more teachers in the CTE program and I just can't. Nobody's biting. It's, it's, it's so difficult to promote a district that honestly, I had no idea I had so much hardships. So please listen and thank you so much for being here.
A promise, a promise is fast, a promise is fast, y'all, pardon me. Tony Jackson, Hackensack, Hackensack, Hackensack. I, everything that has been said, I echo all of it. Uh, I don't have too much to say. I want to say two things. One is that I want to bring up the fact that we can extend the accessibility by making this virtual and, and offering the opportunity for those who are not here to see what's going on and to participate as well. Um, and as, as we continue to talk about accessibility and inclusivity, it's right there. It's right there. And the last time that I brought that up, it was brought up that this is being done the correct way. We're, we're not saying you don't have to do this. We're not saying you're not doing this the right way. We're just saying that you can include more people. The last thing I want to say is that it feels so strange to be walking out of here with a plaque about sustainability. Because what we're seeing is that this is not sustainable. So, so, so as, as, as an amazing district with an amazing, amazing community that we serve, we are telling you right now that it is not sustainable and we cannot continue to brand or market ourselves as such, knowing that this is what's really happening. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Yeah, Tom Trizano, Hackensack High School teacher. And also, uh, repping the HEA as a Health and Safety Chairperson. And I think, um, I'm lucky to work with such amazing people, honestly. Um, people who really give their, um, all to the profession that they've chosen. You know, they've answered a calling and they've answered a calling to each other. And so I applaud you all for that. I think that's admirable. Um, I think also, um, you know, echoing and kind of piggyback on what Tony was just saying, I, I think it has a little bit to do with being proactive. Proactive as opposed to reactive. I think what we've been listening to for the last few meetings that I've attended, um, going back pretty much for about half of my career, is that it seems as though we're constantly trying to catch up to where everybody else is at. Uh, we're not making, uh, active plans, thinking five years in the future in a lot of cases. Instead, we're constantly kind of going up against a situation where we're trying to be compliant. The idea that we have to, you know, wait for a hundred years of a building's life to begin to think about installing elevators that are now being installed when that technology's been around since, I mean, Hoboken was invented. I mean, really, you're talking about a really long time. The other thing that I think I'm hearing is a, a matter of, um, of concern about transparency. You know, questions being offered and asked and then a, a lack of response in a timely fashion. and then a, a lack of response in a timely fashion. Um, it seems defensive, it seems protective, it seems, uh, alienating to a, a staff that is genuinely concerned, looking, uh, for, uh, apt leadership and apt answers. Uh, there's, seems to be not enough answers and not enough information. Um, you know, I was also, uh, kind of considering a, a, a number of things that have, have come across, um, as the health and safety chairperson, uh, some of which are building issues that have been brought up before. But also just, uh, you know, obvious, uh, security issues. There are issues in our district that have to do with SROs and being able to be responsive on specific campuses, uh, having somebody manning those positions and a lack of person manning those positions should raise major concerns for all of us. Uh, the impacts of IDA is still being unresolved. Uh, maybe we're waiting for insurance checks to clear. Uh, maybe those checks have cleared and they're sitting in accounts and now we're earmarked for other things. Uh, but I know that there are many people who have, um, uh, materials that are no longer available to them because of the loss of, at the, at the floodwaters of IDA. Um, never mind the sanitization issues, which have been covered before. Uh, the concern about IP, IEP mandates, the special ed, um, issues that have been brought up earlier today are, are critical to the, the functioning of our community. Uh, from top to bottom, should concern everybody. Uh, the improper supervision of students in general, uh, regardless who's in, you know, being placed in charge, should be, uh, tantamount for our concerns, um, in providing a fair and equitable and just, um, situation for every single one of our students, so they can end up getting the proper training, uh, proper teaching, be successful. And then, um, you know, I think probably the last one that I'd have is, uh, I guess, if you want, I'll email you my list. All right, I got about thirty things on here, I got you like fuck.
So, um, I think that brings us to the end of public comments. Um, this is my first time of presiding over this, so I will be, um, doing the, the answering part when it's time for that. Um, in a little bit of a different way this time. Um, so now we need to, to move to our, um, resolution. First, um, somebody needs to know. Uh, right here. Um, so we need to approve our minutes board, be it resolved, uh, that the Hackensack Board of Education approves the regular reading minutes and closed session minutes of September twentieth, two thousand twenty-one, as submitted. Uh, can I have a motion to approve those minutes? Ms. Lassane? A second? Do we need to do a roll call for that?
Yes.
A roll call, please.
It was moved by Mr. Lassane, seconded by Mr. Goodman, Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Denali? Mr. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Lassane?
Yes.
Mr. Oats?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. James Pickery?
Yes.
So we'll move into personnel. Um, so, um, I present to the board, um, actions A1, A through V. Can I have a motion, since I'm presiding, I need someone else to do a motion. Ms. Lassane, thank you, Mr. Oats seconded it. Roll call, please.
Roll call for five, Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Denali?
Yes.
Mr. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Lassane?
Yes.
Mr. Oats?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. James Pickery?
Yes.
Thank you, moving to policy. Mr. Oats? Good evening. Uh, two items for a first read on the policy. Uh, emergency virtual remote instruction program mandate, that's new, that pretty much is, uh, dealing with, uh, when there's a state of emergency declared, there's a lot, and two of that, you have any questions, reach out. Also, P, uh, PNR fifty-seven fifty-one, sexual harassment, now it's changed mandated sexual harassment of students with other mandated provisions. And the rest for the, uh, second reads. If you have any questions with any of these, please reach out. Also, a special note, um, Mrs. Denali uh, is not up for reelection this time, and I just want to tell you, it was a pleasure having you on our committees with the policy and the buildings and grounds, and you'll be missed, and, uh, you're one of the best. Um, put these forward, B1, B2. So that's a motion, we have a second. Mr. Coleman? Roll call.
On policy B1 and 2, Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Denali?
Yes.
Mr. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Lassane?
Yes.
Mr. Oats?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. James Pickery?
Yes.
Thank you, moving to curriculum, Mr. Coleman?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I offer, uh, curriculum resolution C2 through C19. Uh, for approval by the board.
Have a second?
A second.
Mr. Goodman?
Moving to Mr. Coleman, seconded by Mr. Goodman. Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Denali?
Yes.
Mr. Goodman?
Yeah.
Ms. Lassane?
Yes.
Mr. Oats?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. James Pickery?
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Thank you, moving to, uh, finance, uh, Mr. Goodman?
Good evening, everyone, and thanks for coming tonight. Uh, on the finance committee, I, I offer items D1 through D12.
Make a motion. Mr. Oats seconded. Roll call, please.
On items D1 through D12, Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Denali?
Yes.
And Mr. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Lassane?
Yes.
Mr. Oats?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. James Pickery?
Yes.
Um, for buildings and grounds, we have, um, E1 through E12, um, for your consideration tonight, can I have someone move that for me, please? Mr. Denali? Second, Mr. Goodman? Roll call, please.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Denali?
Yes.
Mr. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Lassane?
Yes.
Mr. Oats?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. James Pickery?
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Thank you, so. Thank you. Um, so a lot's been said. So, um, there's been a lot that's happened tonight, and I thank you for, um, coming and standing together. Um, so I've tried to take some notes and group them somewhat accordingly, so that I can ask the appropriate person to respond. Um, so that, that you can leave with the best answer that we can provide tonight. Some things, in full disclosure, may take us to come back, but I will make sure that it comes back to this table. Um, so, first, let me, so again, we, we work on, um, a, a high level of like policy and, and things. And, and so the, the daily running of the schools is not in our purview, so I'm going to specifically ask some of the things of Mr. Sanchez, and if you need to, to move that forward to, to one of your assistants, uh, that, that's fine. So specifically, um, let's start with, um, the shortage of support staff, lunch aids, slash paras.
Sure, so I'll start briefly, and then I'm going to ask, um, our new HR manager to speak a little bit about, you know, staff shortages in general throughout the state. Um, so what I can tell you is, all of the positions have been posted, so we're not hiring for, for a lack of trying. Um, all of the lunch assistants, paras, and, um, and teaching staff, really, they're interviewed at the school level, um, special services positions interviewed with the Department of Special Services. Um, they're, you know, look actively looking for candidates. Whenever we find candidates, if, um, if those recommendations are pushed up to me, I push them forward. Um, so we're not, not holding, we're not holding back on hiring of any lunch assistant or para or anything of, of, of that like. Um, Mr. Adedoin, perhaps you can share some insight of, you know, what you've learned, um, that's going on, really, not just in New Jersey, but throughout the country.
Good evening, uh, everyone. So just like Mr. Sanchez just alluded to, um, it's a national issue that we're, we're facing. It's not just Bergen County or New Jersey. I just came back from a conference and, um, in Washington DC, and, uh, the problem is that we're competing with, uh, Uber drivers, Uber Eats drivers. It, it, it's, it's an alarming thing that we have to kind of. We're, if, if we may, uh, members of the public, um, teaching staff, members, employees, please be mindful that public comment is now over. Um, please do not disrupt the meeting, thank you so much. So we're, we're competing with different, um, industries, and we have to kind of shift our thinking, and that's what we're doing. Um, Mr. Sanchez and I have come up with some strategies, and we're going to try to implement them. Um, but we are trying our best to address them. We are doing everything that we can, we're poaching, we're calling other districts, calling different people to kind of support us. We're looking at universities to kind of support us. NJCU, Fairleigh Dickinson, these are the things that we're trying to do. But again, we have to shift our focus and just take some time and, um, see where we are. We have looked at different avenues, we looked at monies, we looked at, uh, different resources, but we're trying our best, um, just please be patient with us. Thank you. Again, excuse me, ma'am, can you please stop disrupting the board meeting? The public comment period is over, thank you. Okay, ma'am, with, with all due respect, the board vice president just commented about the will and the intent of the board administration to respond to the questions and comments to the extent appropriate pursuant to the law. There are matters of personnel and other matters that are confidential. Again, whether you like or do not like the answer, the public comment period is over, please stop disrupting the meeting, thank you. Is there anything you'd like me else to address?
I, I think that may be, don't go far.
Okay.
But I think that that may be all from you. So, um, Mr. Sanchez, the other two from that segment is, um, preparing for the succession planning for, um, Fairmount and, um, programs for lost learning, which may end up being missed.
Sure, so, I mean, as far as the, the succession for the Fairmount school principal, um, we, we, you know, once we accepted, um, you know, Principal Astron Loeb's resignation, we did post for the position. Um, you know, clearly, you know, we're going to, we're screening our candidates, to, to be quite frank, um, you know, we want to make sure that we get an excellent pool of candidates to even screen from initially. So initially, um, you know, we had limited number of applicants. Um, we don't want to just, you know, interview from a pool of five, we want to make sure that we get the best possible candidates to interview from. So, um, that position has been posted, and we will be interviewing soon. Hopefully, you know, we'll be hiring somebody in November, that's the goal. But, you know, again, we, we want to make sure that we do it with fidelity. As far as, um, um, academic programs that, you know, we're, we're offering, I don't know if, uh, you know, Ms. Parchman or Dr. Kazmuck's here, I'm not sure if she's here, if either one of you wants to speak to, um, what we're doing with, uh, learning loss at the schools.
I'm sorry, I was having a conversation with somebody, so I didn't hear the question.
Sure, so it had to do with, uh, the, one of the comments tonight was about, um, you know, programs for academic support and learn, learning loss that are happening at the schools.
Okay, so our middle school program for after-school is going to begin next week. That's the program that we are in conjunction with the Boys and Girls Club. It, we ran a program in August with them, it was really successful. So we have fifty-four middle school students scheduled to, scheduled that expressed interest in that program. It'll run in conjunction with the Boys and Girls Club, so there'll be ELA in math, as well as phys ed, art, and, um, STEM. So that program will expand as we gain more interest, but right now we have fifty-four students slated for that program. High school is looking to begin a program that's going to be seventy-five percent math, that's through our SR2 funding for learning acceleration. So they're going to be doing seventy-five percent math, twenty-five percent ELA in conjunction with the Parent Outreach Center's Homework Call Program and the SAT program that we ran last year virtually with method test prep. So they're, they're looking to post soon. And then our elementaries are beginning their, the conversations around their tutorial programs. There were some questions around whether some of the elementary programs could run virtually, there was some interest in, from parents in that. So hopefully those postings will come up and the programs will start in November. And they can run until May, they're budgeted through the end of May with, um, a break in January, but if they start later, we'll be, we won't have to take the break.
And, and, and Dr. Kazmuck, if you could just stay for a second, because I might need to elaborate on my next case, statement. So the other thing that we did, we planned to hire, um, part-time intervention teachers at the elementary schools. Um, we were going to hire, you know, part-time language arts and part-time math teachers, that unfortunately, um, the candidate pool has been very slim, and we weren't able to, you know, fill those positions, that, you know, there really just weren't enough candidates in the pool. Um, that being said, um, we will be looking to possibly move into a coach position, and Lauren, can you expand a little bit about what we talked about?
Right, so we talked about coaches for reading and math. We're doing a pretty significant ELA, English Language Arts rollout for the elementary schools, and the elementary schools are the ones that lack supervisor support right now. So we discussed, um, ELA and math coaches, district ELA and math coaches for the elementary schools, so that they could support some of our initiatives at that level and some coaching supports of teachers.
Good, thank you, and that's going to be using, you know, some of the SR funds that we, we were planning and using for the part-time intervention teachers in the first place.
ARP, the SR3 funding.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you, so, um, so the ECDC staff showed up in force, thank you. Um, and I, I'm glad Mr. Cruzer gave it the time now. That has, that, that is a problem, we know it is a problem. Um, again, that happened many years ago, that we have to figure out, we were in a meeting this on the thirteenth. It is a constant conversation trying to figure that piece out. We, we, we are in conversations with, um, uh, other entities trying to figure out other buildings and, I mean, all those pieces. Um, but we hear you and we, we know that it is absolutely a problem. Now, um, the, the conversation, some, so I'm kind of, um, piggybacking on the ECDC folks, because they also brought up, as, as with other HEA members, um, dealing with our paraprofessional, paraprofessionals. Um, just so, um, again, this is, as, as this current board, I can tell you, we take full responsibility of even what's happened in the past. We inherited things, for example, our lunch, um, aids were, um, already at a certain price. We reinstated that price. Um, and we had, uh, in, in our committee meeting, we had the exact, I was like, oh, well, crap. The, that group makes more than this group. I mean, we, we had that, um, visual because, um, the way it just happened to be represented on, on our, um, uh, whatever you call it, it, it had a, a lunch aid next to a, a paraprofessional that made, um, twenty dollars. So, um, we will take that back to the, the table and look at that. Um, and, um, as, as far as, um, the piece, uh, dealing with full-time paraprofessionals, that is something I, I'm not completely sure of the history of that, of when that happened. Um, but I can tell you, from a personal perspective only, I was a teacher of severe and profound students with disabilities, and I had three, and I could not do anything with that. So, we, we will keep, we will keep that conversation, um, moving. Thank you for, um, bringing that. I can promise you that I am personally an advocate for our paraprofessionals, because we cannot make it through a school day without you, if you're here and there. So, one of the questions, the, um, what is the protocol if one of our vice principals, our principals is sick and the vice principal happens to be, it's her, it's her day, because they're both hurt, at the other school?
Okay, so, so I'll begin by saying, you know, all of the elementary principals do know what the plan is, so, you know, those questions could be asked there as well, but I will answer it. Um, at, at, at all schools throughout the country, throughout New Jersey, it's not mandated to have assistant principals, so I want to be clear with that. And most of the schools in Bergen County that have elementary schools with over five hundred kids, they do not have elementary assistant principals. That, uh, listen, the audience, please, I, I respected everybody, I ask that in respect in return. If we're, we're going to answer the questions, allow us to answer them, thank you. So, the reality is that while we're accustomed to having elementary, uh, assistant principals in our district here, um, it's not required to have that. So, there are some districts, even within Bergen County, that share principals between two schools, let alone not having an assistant principal. So this concept and this model can work. When we have, in our current situation right now, we have, um, two schools with two principals and a shared assistant principal. Um, it's not fair to that assistant principal to be jumping back and forth whenever a principal is out, so they have a schedule. So they have a schedule and they follow that schedule. When a principal is out, if, I'm going to give an example. If Mr. James Victory is a principal at one school, I'm a principal at another school, a principal, it's called School B, and Dora is our assistant principal. If she's scheduled to be with me today and I'm out, she stays at my school. If she's scheduled to be with him today and I'm out, she stays at his school, but she's still on call for that other school. She's in the district. It's no different than a principal or an assistant principal leaving their building to go to a meeting at central office. They're on call for that school. In an emergency, believe me, it's all hands on deck. In an emergency, everybody's going to run and we're going to go to that school. I'll go myself if I have to. So the point is that there will always be coverage. If it so happens that the three of us are out, then at that point, obviously, we will provide coverage with one of the district administrators from within the district. But again, at two schools, if both principals are out and the assistant principal remains, the assistant principal is on call for that other school and they can manage to run it, just like many other districts do. We can handle it. Our administrators are very capable, very competent, and I'm confident that they can handle this job. That being said, as I mentioned earlier, we did bring it to the association and the association rejected it. So that's all I can say on that topic because I'm not allowed to speak down negotiations.
So Lester, I'm going to actually let you guide me on this one, okay? Usually I try to. So recognizing, so I hear, yes, yes, and is it possible to go back to HASA one more time and figure out a way to get things moving in a direction that is helpful for the students and the teachers? I know, I mean, I know that you're saying that it was declined, but what can our efforts be? Because I don't think we negotiate with them until maybe starting like in January. Well, that's too late.
So I would say that as a general, and that's a great question, and I think it shows the board's intent to be open-minded, to, you know, exhaust every effort to create a fair environment for its employees. I would just, you know, the labor lawyer, the management side in me, I have to say that negotiations, like any communications, a two-way street. And so to a certain extent, the traditional labor relations 101 is an offer is made. The recipient of that offer can either reject it and walk away or they can make a counter offer. And so I have not heard any counter offer from the association. So I would say the ball is arguably in their court as well. But to answer your question, it's, you can always entertain negotiations during the pendency of a contract. It's not always a preferred method. But we know things come up every three to five years that might not have been thought about. And so you can do what's called a reopener and you can do that. But I would submit this for the, for the record and for any board member who may not be as up on this, that just because it was rejected doesn't mean that it's for that person who made the offer to go back to the table and come up with something else. It sometimes requires a counter offer, which I have not heard have been made yet. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there.
So then, okay, so I will, I will leave it there, but and I don't know that it would require a resolution, but I would, me personally, I would like to see that we figure out a way to open up conversations. Now, being in full disclosure, that may mean there's a counter offer is what I'm hearing you say.
So how about, I would suggest that all these communications go through the superintendent and not be discussed at a public board meeting. But I think that the intent is clear that as, as always, just like it is with the HEA, with the impasse we're in, just like it is with the support professionals that we're in impasse, we're always open as a board to reasonable alternatives and proposals that are fair, affordable, and dare I say, sustainable. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So I hope that we got the big chunks of what was asked. If we did not happen to, please feel free, I say this every time, to email me and I will work to get a more direct answer for anything that we may not have tried to cover in this time. So let's close out tonight with some brief board comments. Mr. Goodman, would you like to start us off?
Sure. I'd like to, it would be very brief. I'd like to thank everyone who came out for being so passionate and addressing what's really on your mind. That's why we're here together. And then just, just to thank Mr. Montzano, the presentation on, on World Language Department was wonderful. I always love when our students are here and they give a, they give a student report. Mrs. Parchman, thank you for your report. It was, I think this meeting was much more than optics. So thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
So I'd like to thank Ms. Vida Let's Story for this gift. I mean, this is so thoughtful. It was so good to see that someone thought about us this morning when we, I mean, this evening when we came. Thank you for that. I'd like to thank our World Language Department and our scholars, you know, for such amazing presentations and just listening to them and watching them present in a manner that is just so representative of Hackensack and our teachers and all that you guys do to raise up scholars that present in that way. Victor and May Lee, I'd like to thank them for sharing the student report and just giving us highlights of what's been happening in their school community. And I'd also like to thank everyone that came out tonight. I'd like to thank you for voicing your opinions and sharing your stories and really just being able to share your concerns with us. What you tell us is what we know. Of course, we have a lot of documents that we receive on paper. We receive some emails from you, but it's good to hear your voices and allow us the opportunity to take in this information, communicate with each other and come up with a plan to support you as you've asked. So thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I, I've only been in this seat for about a year and a half as have, you know, more than half this table. And like Mr. Scott Vicki mentioned, we inherited a lot of stuff. The reason we ran is because like most of you guys, you know, taught our kids, my kids, are teaching my kids. I know most of you guys. I have dinner and drinks with a lot of you guys. So, so like, we, you know, why, why are there issues, hundred-year issues in buildings? I ran because of that. I don't, I don't, it's astounding to me that it exists, but we're fixing it. We're doing it and we're listening. You know, like I said, we just got here. So these problems, these issues, these nine, 10, 20, 15-year issues would be baffling me when I ran and that's why I ran. So understand, like, nobody wants to be attacked. So when I say, like, let's change the culture, we here, we want to listen, we want to compensate. Some of y'all want to be teachers. Listen, I, I want to listen and I want to make a change. But we're human beings. We're here. Listen, I see dedication, it's 10:40, y'all are still here. And I, I love that and I appreciate that. And that's why I'm still here. So please, keep the communication lines open. We do hear you. We do want to make change and we do go back and talk about these issues that you guys are right source. Now, I only know what my kids experience and what I experienced. Now, the emails that I get from you are very far between. I get very few when I try to answer them, but I do get them. But just understand that we are all here to try to make that difference. So please be patient and keep coming and keep, and keep speaking. Change the culture though. There's no need to attack us. We're dads, we're moms, we're just here trying to do our best. All right? Thank you.
Mr. Coleman?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I'll try to be very brief. As a young man, you're taught or you're told that everything, if someone says something supportive or complimentary, then it's followed by a but. You disregard the complimentary or supportive comments made prior to that. And there's a dismissiveness about the seriousness about what transpired since the last meeting. I commend you. Mr. Oates, you already have a job where you put your life on the line. I think it's commendable that you volunteer your time, that you're trying to make a difference in this community and that you're trying to make a better condition for your kids, your young kids that go to these schools. And it saddens me that you had to have the audacity to make critical comments at one meeting in a string of meetings that are contentious, that are filled with jeers, cheers, confrontational meetings, critical meetings. You had that audacity and the response was far outsized than it needed to be. As someone mentioned before, a coward behind a keyboard decided to weigh in on someone's behalf. And I can say, in closing, I appreciate what you do. I hope going forward from this night on, because obviously it still continued tonight, that we treat each other, particularly people that are volunteering their time, with a little kindness and respect and have some civility in these public spaces. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oates.
Good evening, everyone. Get ready for some long comments. I'm going to travel on for hours. I'm just kidding. I'll try to make it quick. Mr. Vice President, good job tonight, Mr. Vice President. I think you did a great job, buddy. Good job, good job. Okay. From the last meeting, appreciate the comments on the threat. I think it's obvious that we're not going to be intimidated. We're going to stay here and fight. We don't scratch our head unless it itches. We don't dance unless we hear music. We're not going to be intimidated. That was, I think that was from Remember the Titans, if there's any movie heads out there. Yeah, so we, I feel yucky. I feel yucky. I feel very yucky. I don't like the way things are. It just feels very, something feels very uncomfortable. But I feel like tonight, this may be weird, I don't know, but it was like a spark. With all the passion and all the energy that was brought here tonight is a good thing and it means change. And I, for one, I think that we got to do better. We have to do better collectively. That's on our side. You guys are working your tails off. I said last year, I said last year that, you know, during the COVID, it was going to be the hardest few months of our lives and that we're going to have to bring our A game every step of the way. And I kept saying it was our job to put you in the best position to succeed. And I don't know if we're doing that. I don't know if we're doing that. And I think that we have to do some introspection. Now, again, it's a balance of what this and that and contracts and all this stuff. But I just feel very yucky and it's, it's, we're a family, right? Spoke before about a family. And if one, one of our family is hurting for reasons that we can fix and work on, work together, what the hell are we doing? Like, we are here to fix this for our kids, our community, our town. This is our city. There's nobody else coming in to save it. I said that already. So we got to, we got to figure this thing out. We got to figure this thing out. And I want to say congratulations to all the sports teams, playoff push. Awesome about the middle school starting sports, the heartbeat. Get the heartbeat going here. Get the heartbeat. Again, it's going to take like 5,335 as our students. But that doesn't mean they're the only ones in our family. And we got, we got to watch out for each other and we got to do what we can to help each other. This is a special place. You've seen it with the World Language presentation. You've seen it with Ms. Parchman, Oates, you've seen his presentations. There's a lot going on here to be proud of. There is a lot going on to be proud of. Let me just end by saying, like, in softball and baseball, we go, whenever we break down before a game or after a game, or even more often than not, a rallying cry in between innings, right? Right, Coach back there? One, two, three, comments, four, five, six, family. I didn't make that up. That came from Coach Brad Allen from the middle school. He does that. He started that. When I started coaching with him five, six, seven years ago, that was his thing. And I, I took it and we do it. But one, two, three, comments, four, five, six, family, and we all yell it. And we are a family and just understand that we do hear you. I'm sorry I'm talking on my back to you guys. I'm sorry about that. I can get up and start pacing. I don't know. But just understand that we are going to work this thing through. We're going to keep fighting. We're going to figure this out. Special kids in this district and we understand you guys are working your tails off and understand that we see it. Good job tonight, guys. Good job, everybody. Go comments.
Thank you. So I will be very brief, hopefully brief for. So I really, watching the World Language students was just fantastic. They all were absolutely amazing. I'll tell you, one of those young men needs to be like a talk show host or I think maybe even an Italian club, but they really all did an amazing job and it shows how even when we have hard times in this district, we are still producing great work. And that is much appreciated. I heard that there's an outdoor pep rally coming up at some point. I want to be invited to that because at the Top 20 Dinner, that's what the number one memory was, these pep rallies. So I want to be able to come and experience it. I want to, a couple of comments were made, you know, because I do desperately want Ms. West to like me at some point. I am not going to use the, the, the words of the racket game. And but what I will say is what I want you, what I want everybody to, to take pride in the things that are happening because we do. I'll tell you, my baby could not go to school for four months because of a broken leg because we are 30 years behind. That happened in ninth, or you getting him a? Okay, sorry. But Ms. West, what I want, what I want the collective group to understand, and I know that y'all know this, but I want us to figure out a way to take pride in all the things that are going because like the elevators, that was 1991. It's not just that we, you know, it's not, I mean, because we, it's about employment. Our, our teachers who may have mobility issues, it's a moral obligation. It's not something that we should just do because, you know, it is a moral obligation. And we're 30 years behind. But I want to say, all these projects that are happening, I just want everybody to be on the same page, that those projects have to happen. So my wife says all the time, two things can be true. And although we are maybe having these issues over here, we still are bound by New Jersey state law and federal law to be spending certain amounts of money in a certain bucket of money that can't go towards anything but improvement. So I want us to take, collectively take pride. So I want us to take, collectively take pride. Um, I get the overuse of the, the thing, but I understand, I understand the sentiment, but I want us to take, take pride in what is happening. Um, I'm going to say the same with, um, Mikey of our, Mr. Oates about the middle school sports. That's fantastic, y'all. That's, that's where it all starts when it comes to our high school sports. And that's like, we're, we're finally, you know, we're getting there. Um, and, and, um, and I, and I will give a shout out to Dr. Valiana for, for working to make that happen. Um, I know one of my personal children is starting cross-country. We're hoping he burns off as much energy as possible tomorrow. So, um, um, thank you. Um, let me just say, um, that, that, um, Mr. Powell was mandated to work tonight and that he, he asked me to, to share with you that he, he was, didn't have a choice. Um, but that, that, that is where he is. Um, and now, I don't want you all to cuss me out, but I would like for us to go back into closed session just for a few minutes. I promise, for just a few minutes, because um I want us, while, while their comments are fresh on, in our minds and what's going on. And it just so happens that negotiations, our timelines are kind of wonky with, um, with our next board meeting. So I want us to make sure that we have everything um fresh in our minds. So if y'all would indulge, do we have to do a, a thing?
Yes, so Mr. Vice President, the motion would be to go into closed executive session to discuss matters of negotiation specifically with the HEA and the HAOPE as well as other bargaining units in the district. Minutes will be taken and released to the public if and when the need for confidentiality no longer exists and action may be taken by the board when it becomes a public session. Thank you.
I move what he said. A second by?
No, 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 no. I have a question. So you said a challenge that actually may be taken.
I, I always say that, but yes, it's just this.
So they should wait.
Well, they, they have an option to wait, um, but it reserves the right for the board to take action if they desire to.
All right, so we're going back into closed session. Oh, third, uh, first, uh, you said you take a number. I don't know. I'm just raising my hand. And um, the rest of you, I know you have to be at work in the morning, so um you can wait for us to come out. I don't know that we'll have anything to say, or we'll see you next time. Because we don't really adjourn. So we got the, our conversation. Um, we want you to know that we, we hear what you said. And um, our conversation is believing or like trying to, to check what you're, I mean, what you mean. So, but now back to the table. So I made a motion to adjourn. Son, I'm always excited. I've always wanted to do this.